Warren snuck in. Board Member Joyce, are you still there?
I am, thank you.
Board Member Joyce, we're just gonna call to order and take a little vote and get you online, alright?
That's right.
Alright, thank you. Alright. The School Board of the Duval County School District is now convened in its workshop meeting. According to the CDC's website, Duval County's COVID-19 community level is currently designated as low. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing for people with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-19. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. We're gonna start with approval of board member participation. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.26, board members may attend board meetings and participate and vote through the use of interactive video and/or telephone system. Such participation is allowable under Board Policy 2.26 as Board Member Joyce has good cause for her absence due to illness of herself or a family member. That the Duval County School Board approved the participation of Board Member Charlotte Joyce in the March 21st, 2023 Board Workshop, March 21st, 2023 Agenda Committee Meeting, and the March 21st, 2023 Special Board Meeting via interactive video and/or telephone system. I ask for a motion. I have a motion by Board Member Jones and a second by Board Member Willie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote, signaled by saying aye. Any nay?
No.
That motion passes four to zero. And at this time, we will go ahead and bring Board Member Joyce online. Is she good? Okay, Board Member Joyce, can you hear?
I can hear you, thank you so much, good morning.
Good morning, we hope you're doing better.
Getting better every day.
We have great faith in that. We are gonna actually start out this morning, we are thrilled this morning. I'm carrying forward the tradition that Board Member Former Chair Willie started, which is highlighting one of our partners each month. And as Board Chair, it's fun every once in a while, you get to highlight a partner that you might have worked with in your last life. And I will say, back when I was with the district and worked with CTE, I had the absolute privilege of working with Michael Rastian with ViStar. He oversees our ViStar academies, actually he oversees them all in northeast Florida, but works with Duval. He has been an incredible partner in our work, and so I'm gonna ask him to come on up and share a little bit about ViStar and their work with Duval County Public Schools.
Awesome. Well, good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity, thank you for the invite, Dr. Coker. We're very excited to be here with you all today. For the sake of time, I will skip through or give a high-level overview of some of the slides, but we wanted to keep them in the presentation, so you had them in your board packet. And then there's some other supplemental flyers included as well. So we'll take the 10 minutes or so, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions, questions that you might have. So, again, my name is Michael Rastian, I have the privilege of serving as the Vice President of School Programs with ViStar Credit Union, and it is an honor to do the work that we do alongside great educators. And we wanted to give you a brief overview of ViStar. A very abbreviated version of our history is that we started over 70 years ago, when 12 people came together and each pitched in $5. So we had $60 and a shoebox. And they started a way, a safer way, and a more affordable way for civil service and military families to save and borrow money. And carry that on to where we are today. We now serve over 800,000 members, and we have over $13 billion in assets. I don't say that at all to brag, but as you guys know, as leaders in the community, that type of growth and that type of longevity doesn't happen by accident. And we've done our best to consistently do the right thing at the right times for the right reasons. And our school programs, I think, is an extension of that. So we've continued to stay involved in our community, we have our deep roots with military and veterans. We support our team members on a very meaningful level as well. The minimum wage for someone to work inside of our branch locations is $20 an hour. And then there's other incentives. Of course, there's matching health plans, matching 529 plans. One that's relevant to our students is the tuition assistance. When someone comes onboard with us as a full-time team member, ViStar pays $5,200 per year of tuition assistance for our team members to pursue their continued education. And that's regardless of their career aspirations or further educational goals. As long as they're going to an accredited school, we help them fund that support. So, it was about early 2000 when we first learned of the world of career and technical education, and we were sanding on an advisory board for a local high school. And that's where the idea came to mind around, well, instead of just providing job shadowing or guest speaking, which are very important, teacher externships are important, what if we built a fully functional ViStar Credit Union on high school campuses, but it was exclusively operated by the students who were part of their business academies? And that's where the idea was birthed. We had no idea it would grow to be as big as it is today, but it was simply an extension of what's known as the Credit Union philosophy of people helping people. And our former board and former senior team fully believed in the concept. He was a former math teacher, so he had a heart for education, and it was, again, just simply the right thing to do for that school at that time. Now, our current senior team and our current and new board members have doubled down on the support that we provide to our school partners. So very thankful to help accomplish these objectives together. Of course, the schools benefit for all the reasons you know of. Well, how CTE will help create a more engaged student, presumably higher academic achievement, higher graduation rates, potential acceleration points for the school, they complete industry certifications, all those good things that you guys know about. So we started the ViStar Academy of Business back in 2006, 2007, and we now have dropped the Business and Finance, Business and Accounting to keep it general. So our school partners, who are the experts in curriculum, can decide if they want to offer a Finance Track, an Accounting Track, or an Entrepreneurship Track. They have the autonomy to do so. We do recommend a sequence of courses for our interns. The Business Management and Analysis Career Pathway works really well with what our interns experience if they participate all three years in our program. And so, again, we're partnered with their school districts to help bring the learning to life. You know, it's been said, that information makes you smart, but application makes you wise, which we know in whole to be true. The more you can apply the concepts, the better solidified they are, and the more learning gains you have. So here's how each school is broken down, and then I'll go over our specific support with Duval County Public Schools. Each school branch is operated by 12 student interns, who get a chance to participate in a year-long paid internship opportunity. The minimum pay for our students is $15 an hour, and that's when they work under our roof, when they work in our buildings, they're compensated. But when they work in their school branch on campus, they earn credit towards their courses. It's integrated into their curriculum, so they're not paid when they're on campus, so to speak. But then we offer a scholarship opportunity, we offer a little bit of money to help them market their school branch on campus to their community. And then a couple of new things that we've just launched recently is our High School Debit Card Give Back Program. And that's where five cents per transaction will be tracked when someone uses their school logo debit card. We then track that and will pay that back to that school directly, up to a total of $10,000, just to help supplement some of the ongoing needs with education. And then we launched the Teacher Stipend recently to help reward and recognize teachers for the work they're doing outside of their normal duties within the scope of a teacher. So if they work weekends, holidays, of course, over the summer, they work with us a lot. So those things have been exciting. And so our history with Duval County, we started in 2011 at Wolfson High School, and then immediately the next year, we were up with John Rebaught High School. And then we took a couple of years just to continue to grow and to really refine the concept, because this was new to us, as it was to our school partners. And then in 2016, we worked with First Coast, worked with Dr. Coker to open First Coast, which was very exciting. And then immediately after that, which this was the first time we've ever done this, was we opened two new schools in the same school district the following year. Part of that was Dr. Coker's competitive nature. She asked how many other schools do the counties, do other counties have? And once she found out the numbers, she said, okay, we're gonna beat that. Which, you know, we know the need is great, so we were honored to help. Don't get your calculators out and try to do the math on this. We just wanted to first show off the debit cards. These are the debit cards that are associated with each of the school partners, and then highlight some of the specific support. I do have the totals on the next slide. Those are some beautiful cards that the students and parents, and really anyone in the world who's a ViStar member can order. And they can use a transaction, use their card for a transaction overseas, and that local high school could benefit from that transaction. So, to date, we've offered 504 year-long paid internships to our five schools in Duval County. We've offered $42,000 in scholarship awards. And then this is the number that's most exciting to me, is the compensation. That's approximately $2.1 million in compensation, because that has been paid back to those students. And in some of our communities, we have students making more money per hour than their parents and guardians do. So it can truly change the trajectory of their family. And then this is our first year of tracking our debit card give-back program. Duval County will receive just under $3,800. And it might be kinda hard to see the color on the screen, but Rebaught is actually leading the way this first pilot year. So congratulations to Dr. Bostic and his team.
That's Bostic, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, he took advantage of it. So something we remind ourselves of constantly is, this is a student development program. The personal and professional development of the students matter. This is not a membership drive for us to be in front of our target audience. If you sit in any of our educational presentations that Mr. Brown delivers, we're very rarely even talk about ViStar. We talk about financial education, we talk about being prepared for your future, because we're partners in the education sense. And the students learn, we like to think that they learn a lot about finance, which they do, but they, they'll tell you, if you get a chance to talk to them, they learn about themselves. They learn about conflict resolution, they learn communication, collaboration. All of these intangibles that we didn't originally set out to experience, but it's one of the biggest takeaways, and I think one of the biggest benefits for those students. So as far as an internship goes, they receive an in-depth financial education. And the objective is to deliver as much content to those interns that they become peer-to-peer resources for their school. And our goal is to reach as much of the entire student population as possible with various levels of financial education. So it extends far beyond the four walls of that classroom and far beyond those 12 students to reach as much of the student population as possible. And then just to clear the air a bit, because I know there is some misunderstanding, rightfully so, the students gain valuable, hands-on, firsthand experience to multiple aspects of the financial services sector. They're not, I'll just use the term "just-tellers." Now, if you visit a branch or a school branch, you may see them performing that task the most frequently, only because it's the most common. But they learn aspects of auditing, inherent risk, internal controls, they learn security and regulations, they learn marketing, public speaking, again teamwork, communication. It's very dynamic, and it's very beneficial for the students involved. And then, of course, they're paid as they go. So we've, so to speak, put our money where our mouth is in regards to internships. Now, from a financial wellness standpoint, we, as ViStar, don't offer a set curriculum, because as you all know, a curriculum is way more robust than just having a book of information. But we do direct our teachers to free resources that are available. But if they already have a book that they're using, even if it's from another financial institution, we wanna come along and partner with them to enhance the material that they have versus trying to offer new stuff to make it unintentionally confusing or contradictory. We do have our presentation material, which is kinda hard to see on the screen, but it's a money thing, material is very helpful. There's about 45 different topics that we're able to email to teachers, we can send them videos, our students help us present this content in front of the other classes, and we help add value. And then our On My Own Reality Fair, Kevin just finished one at Rebaught High School recently. That's been like our bread and butter from a financial education standpoint, because it's a hands-on experience. Our students get to assume a role, and they take on the learning, and they interact with business partners, and they're up and about moving. It's a form of the project-based learning. So as of now, we're at 18 fully functional high school branches, spread across eight different school districts. This year, we had 216 interns working with us. 60 of them are from Duval County, alright? 12 students per school, we have five school programs with Duval, so 60 students each year. And then, again, some of the numbers that stand out to me the most, the amount of compensation paid to students, the debit card give-back program. I look forward to when we're writing the maximum amount of $10,000 checks each year to each of our school partners, for them to use at their discretion. And then our Teacher Stipend, we just put an aggregate total there, but again, to reward and recognize our teachers. Now, we do track a lot of data. Most of that is to help our students understand different aspects of business when they're running their business. The only number that we return back to our board and to our senior team is how many students we've reached with financial education. That's the main driver on our side, because they know that that matters. That's the world we live in, and we wanted to do our best to go upriver and help prevent people from falling in or becoming entangled in some of the financial pitfalls that people find themselves in. And we figured high school was one of the best times to do that in a person's life, as opposed to being downriver, how we are in our branches, and helping them with the situations they're already in. And that kind of growth does not show up on a spreadsheet, so we know that not everything that counts can be counted, right? It's the intangibles. Again, I could talk for hours about success stories, but I'll just, I'll cover two, and then I'll close. The Lex Walton on your right, I'm using his full name because he's on the Jack's USA Partnership Earn Up website. He's one of their highlight stories. He is the poster child for how these programs work. He started with us at Wolfson High School, and he'll tell you, he had zero desire to work in a bank or to work with people face-to-face. He wanted to go into IT, but he knew that this could be his foot in the door into the IT market, yeah. And so, but he took advantage of working in his school program as a high school student. He then applied for and accepted a position as a teller, and he worked in our branch network while he was finishing his credentialing and degree at FSCJ, and he qualified for their scholarships, took advantage of our tuition assistance, and then he got promoted to our Help Desk. From there, he went to our Products and Application Support Services, which is a promotion. And now he's one of our Senior Systems Analysts with Inside of ViStar. And he's worked his way up, and he knows the impact that this program makes. And so I really like introducing him to our new students as much as I can. And then the young lady in the middle, her initials are TP. She did not give a report to any papers or whatnot, but I consider her a success story. She was a part of our program at Rebaught High School for one year, and she decided not to come back the next year. She enjoyed it, but how valuable of an experience is that where it's not only important to learn what you want to do in career, you want to pursue, she also learned, ah, thank you, but I don't want to continue this path. She wanted to get into the restaurant business, and here's where the success story is. She applied for what would effectively be her very first job, and that restaurant manager ended up seeing her resume and going, explain to me how you were with ViStar at 15 years old, what were the responsibilities? That restaurant manager called the teacher, called our local branch rep, said, explain the level of responsibility these students have, and they're accountable for how much money and doing what kind of transactions? So the restaurant manager said, not only do we want to hire you, but we want to make you shift manager. And so at 16, how much more of a head start was that, right? And again, I can talk for hours, but out of respect for your time, I'll pause there. And let me ask you this, if you guys are in agreement, I think we all are, that having a good understanding of how money works, it's not a matter of if we need to learn those skills, it's just a matter of when, right? So if we agree with that, we can do one of two things. We can either take the time to prepare for our future, or we will take the time to repair from our past. Right? And I personally spend a lot of time repairing. I won't speak for my team, but statistically speaking, most people have had to repair in some form or fashion. So that's where our level of passion and energy comes in, to be partners with you all and with our educators to help make this as beneficial as possible for students regardless of their career aspirations. Thank you all so much for your time.
Michael, I will say, I've talked about ViStar, and in particular about Michael Rastian forever, because he is just an incredible resource to our community, to our children, to our teachers and whatnot. I'm excited that you all got to see him and hear from him today to understand why I've been a fan for so very long. I do want to make sure I say, though, when they do this, a lot of this, it looks like CTE work. When you do this, we also need to make sure that operations is noted in this, because these items don't open up without a Paul Soraes behind the scenes, making sure, because our facility has to literally turn an area into a ViStar branch. And so, we need to make sure that we recognize that Mr. Soraes' team is always a part of making these things happen. That being said, I'm gonna open up for just questions or comments from board members. Board Member Jones.
Thank you, it was a great presentation. It's been five years since you opened your lance, a school branch in Duval County. What are we waiting on?
Yes, sir.
That was gonna be part of my, wait, that was gonna be part of my thing.
Well, your leadership, your district leadership is working on that as we speak.
I gotta get closer to my chair. But if a school board employee is a member of ViStar, can they use the branch at the school? Or is it open to students?
Yes, sir. Well, it's primarily open to students and faculty on that campus, but if anybody has legitimate school business to be on campus during those hours of operation, because it's essentially a learning lab, it's a classroom, and they're welcome to be on campus, then they're also welcome to use that branch, because it's fully integrated, fully functional. So keep that in mind if you're on campus at any of the lunchtimes.
Thank you very much, very good job.
Absolutely, but it is closed to the public.
Right.
So, as ambitious as some of our principles are, we want them to know this is a learning experience for our students.
Other questions, comments?
I would, through the chair. Thank you so much for you and your team for coming. Just wanna just recognize the Give Back Program, because that's been a buzz like throughout the community. I represent Rebaught, and alone are going to buy their cards, and they're excited to see that logo on there. So it's such a unique and interesting way to give back, which is an easy way to do it as well, so I wanted to recognize that. And then just talk about, you talk about success stories. It'd be interesting to figure out, what is our ability to be able to, on our end, to track folks afterwards? We're looking at, you know, 10 years out now, so there's probably numbers of stories like that, or, and just wondering how we were able to do that. I know there's issues with sharing and whatnot, but I wonder how we can support doing some of that, because more stories like the young man on the right, and even the one in the middle, need to be shared, so folks, more folks can get involved, and not just ViStar, but other CTE operations say, oh, okay, this is how I can support.
Well, and I will also say on that note, too, just also, the child that gets some of the financial literacy through the programs and doesn't end up in a financial situation, not necessarily working at ViStar, but ends up in a better financial situation because of what they were taught through the financial literacy piece as well, so.
Yeah, yes. So when you hit the nail on the head, we, looking back, we wish we would have created some way to stay more closely connected with those students as they've gone through our program. So far, we've hired 66 students who graduated over the years, and 39 of them are still employed with us. But the number is still out, because they can start as early as a sophomore.
Yeah.
And so there's three years of lead time before they even graduate. And what we found now, some of them go off to school, and now they're coming back. Because they're like, oh, I've got my foot in the door with one of the top credit lines in the country. So we, yeah, let us know if we can help with that effort, because it makes...
So the chair, is there, is there, do you give preference for folks who have worked as an intern in schools? If they do finish school and come back, do they get past that first pre-screen, or?
Absolutely, absolutely. So the interview is certain, right? And they still have to qualify for it, because this is based on the business needs and then their career aspirations and whatnot. But in most every case, unless, actually, we had a gentleman from Rebaught High School move down to Orlando, we opened our branch in Oviedo, and the new branch VP who just learns of what we offer, he's like, he was a former student intern, we want to interview him, we'll hire, you know? And so he actually still works down there today, so, so yes, sir.
Well, with that, I will say, and I want to make sure, Kevin is also here who works with our programs as well. Want to make sure we give note to him as well, he's on the ground doing the good work as well. But other than that, Michael, just want to say thank you to you. You all are gold standard of the partnerships that we have in Duval County. We're incredibly proud of the work. I will say, I am proud of the number of them. Yes, I was a little competitive and a little driven and a little focused when I heard our surrounding county might have as many branches as us. That is true. I will say, I represent District 1, which is Terry Parker, if it's ever in interest, I'm just saying. I'll throw that out there, too. But other than that, just, you've been at this work for a long time. We thank you for your personal commitment to Duval County, to the work that we do here. We thank you for ViStar's investment and the position that you occupy, because it says that they really are truly committed to the work to have people full-time on the ground doing this work with us. So just want to say thank you, and thank you for your time this morning, and we appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you, my pleasure.
Oh, wait, hold on, Board Member Joyce, I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
I do, I do, thank you so much. I really appreciate this presentation this morning. I want to, I just want to say that I don't think there's any, any member or citizen of Duval County that has not heard of ViStar Credit Union, whether you're a member there or not. It's a very prominent community partner, prominent, you know, financial institution in Jacksonville. With that being said, I want to say that I specifically have had, in the last couple of months, constituent reached out to me, and this person was homeschooled, this little girl was homeschooled, wanted to get back into the Duval County Public School System. When she looked at the programs offered around the county, she was really, really interested in the ViStar program at, you know, one of our local high schools. Unfortunately, there is not a ViStar grant in District 6. It's probably not as forward. Was a little impossible. I just want to say that this is a very valuable partnership. I think, and I would rather, rather see at least one of these two branches in each board member district. I think it's that important, and I think there's an appetite with our students, with our parents, to see this partnership expand. So I just wanted to just let everybody know that, to my best friend.
Board Member Joyce, you're great, thank you so much for chiming in. And I will say, it looks like you and Board Member Jones and I are all vying for the next one. All vying, no pun intended, ViStar. Just, anyway, thank you for your time, and I know y'all have another meeting to go to as well, so. At this time, we're going to recess this meeting, and we're gonna go into our Agenda Committee Meeting, and we will reconvene this meeting following the Agenda Committee Meeting. I'm gonna give admin a moment to switch, while people move on. And Board Member Joyce, we're just flipping to the other meeting, taking a second to get all of the technical pieces in gear, so hold tight. She's getting it done. She beat, she beat me over here. She has the cleanest tennis shoes of anyone on the season year, I swear to goodness. Dr. Green, when Dr. Green wears tennis shoes, they're like the cleanest tennis shoes ever. Alright, we are gonna go ahead and start our Agenda Committee Meeting. The School Board of the Duval County School District is now convened in its Agenda Committee Meeting to review the draft agenda for the April 4th, 2023 Regular Board Meeting. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the Agenda Committee Meeting, please note that pursuant to Board Policy, we accept speaker cards for this meeting until the published start time for the meeting. According to the CDC's website, Duval County's COVID-19 community level is currently designated as low. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing for people with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-19. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. We're gonna go ahead and go into the draft agenda right now, and I'll go ahead. Miss, Board Member Joyce, I'm gonna start with you on agenda item numbers, if you want to give me yours first.
Sure, thank you. I'm gonna pull item number 1, number 2, number 5, number 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, 30, and 31.
Alright, let me read those back and make sure I got them right. 1, 2, 5, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 30, and 31.
Yep, ma'am.
Alright, Board Member Willie.
Through the chair, I have numbers 5, 9, 15, 17, and sort of a group of like 21 through 29, all those are in instruction.
Okay, so 5, 9, 15, 17, and 21 through 29 as a collective group.
Yes, correct.
Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, Board Member Carney.
2, 5, 11, 16...
Two, five, eleven, sixteen, and I'm, Board Member Willie, twenty-one through twenty-nine, only construction, and that's it.
All right, so two, five, eleven, sixteen, and twenty-one through twenty-nine as a group. Vice Chair Pearson.
One, two, three, ten, eleven, and fifteen go together in my mind. Sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-seven go together, and thirty-one.
Okay, one, two, three, ten, eleven, and fifteen together, sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-seven together, and thirty-one. All right, Board Member Jones.
Thank you. Uh, one, two, five, sixteen, and I have that group of twenty-one through twenty-nine.
Okay, so one, two, five, sixteen, twenty-one through twenty-nine. Um, and then I'm gonna have to remind, after I had a technical issue with my laptop and they are ordering parts as we speak, so I was not able to access.
It's two.
Anyway, they're working hard on it. It's good. Um, all right, we're gonna get started with item number one. I'll start with, actually, Board Member Joyce, if you'll kick us off with item number one. Oh, sorry, thank you. I always forget that. I appreciate your reminder. Item number one, contract renewal for Measurement Incorporated Gear Up Grant A. Board Member Joyce?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, um, I pulled this item. I was wondering through the chair, um, through Dr. Green, I just want to make sure that I understand what we are actually voting on in the recommendation. Um, it said that this is an evaluation, grant evaluation service. So, um, can you kind of explain the, specifically what is, what are we actually voting on?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, um, what you're voting on is a contract with Measurement Incorporated. It, it evaluates the effectiveness of the grant. How, how we're implementing the grant, is the grant meeting its goals? Um, this is a federal grant and it requires an evaluation of how we're implementing the grant. But that is what, you're voting on a contract with this third-party company to evaluate Gear Up Grant.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. And I guess my question that, that leads into my next question, which, um, in the, uh, gap analysis, um, it says the last minute, just fifty-eight percent of the district graduates transitioning to post-secondary programs, um, for fall, following the high school graduation. When they do this evaluation, is there actual like, um, marks or criteria that the grant needs to meet in order for us to, um, re-engage the grant? Or is it just basically just to give us information on, you know, what gear up is actually provided?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, it's actually both. Um, this is, who's our second year of? I think this is our second year of grant. And the reason we are in the second one is because the evaluation shows that we are following what we stated was, was in the grant and showing results from the grant. So it's both. What you asked, they're do, they do both.
They do both. Um, and I'm wondering, when it says post-secondary programs, is that just, um, uh, students that are accepted into like a university? Um, because the forty-one percent of graduating class, students accepted into post-secondary education, it was a hundred and thirty-nine students, uh, forty-one percent of the graduating class. Is it just college and second, or what other kinds of post-secondary programs are we measuring?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, it's predominantly college. That is the purpose of the grant. But I, I, if you look at the list of the colleges listed, um, it doesn't preclude state colleges. I don't think, I, I'm gonna go out on a limb, um, I don't think they're counting if like you go to a technical school. It is, because it's geared for helping students go to college.
Okay. Okay.
But I did, if I'm not correct on that, I will, um, do it as a follow-up.
Perfect, thank you so much. Um, and then, uh, my last question with the financial impact. Um, are different funds being used for the evaluation? Or is this, um, coming straight from a grant, is the grant funding the, uh, the cost of the evaluation?
The grant is funding the cost of the evaluation.
Very good. Thank you so much. That's all the questions I have for the fight.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna move to Vice Chair Pearson. She's good. All right, um, Board Member Jones, you had also pulled this item.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Just a quick question on page eleven. A number of students graduating from high school, from three high schools, Rains, Reval, and Jackson with the total of three forty-one, is that accurate? Is that correct?
If they're in the Gear Up program.
Oh, only, okay.
There, it's, this is only for Gear Up.
Okay, that's right. I knew that was mine. I said, wait a minute, I got a lot of work. All right, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item number two. Let's start. Oh, yeah, sure.
So it's the percentage of the total, which I think is five percent or something like that. So what's the total grant for this roughly? I know I've asked that, I know I've tried to do the math. I'm thinking it's, it's big. So that's, that's a small, right, so that's a small, a very small percentage to pay for.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move to, I saw.
You want me to do it in a follow-up?
Yeah, yes, honey.
You will.
I was gonna say Dr. Krieger's back there putting it together for us too. Um, all right, so we'll move on to, um, item number two, Board Member Carney. Oh, Board, I'm sorry, item number two, approval of agreement with Read USA, Board Member Carney.
Um, through the chair, Dr. Green, this might be also for Ms. Renfro. Um, I was just looking at the books that are being provided for this particular book fair. Are we only focusing on STEM materials of Read USA for the end of year? Or is there going to be provided a list of the gamut? And I know we're in a situation right now where we are going through vetting and I know that Read USA has mentioned in this that even though we're not required to vet those books, that they will be. Um, so my curiosity was about, one, the book list will be provided to the district before the book fair for the man to take a look at and for the administrator to take a look at. And is it going to solely be STEM, or is it just mentioned here so that we know they will be STEM books?
Through the chair, the Board Member Carney, I'll answer the first part. We have all, we requested that we get a list, but they have made it very clear that there will be substitute titles that they won't show up on the list.
Okay.
And that is why we tell principals, you need to go through these and know what's being, what children are choosing.
Right, okay.
The STEM part, I don't believe it's just STEM, but I'll bet you.
Sure, through the chair to Board Member Carney. So, um, the majority are STEM, but there's also literature books included. And as a follow-up, we can provide the list. Um, every family will have the list of books that are anticipated to arrive. Just as Dr. Green said, they will have some substitute and the schools, like we always have, we go through those titles of the substitute list. But they will have a list. It'll be in a QR code and, um, also interpreted in ten languages.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll move to Board Member Joyce, item number two.
Um, good morning. Yes, great. So, uh, my first comment is in the description, um, it looks like, and I think this is something that Board Member Carney addressed, that there, there will be a list, um, provided, a list, a book provided, um, to preview so that families can know what's going, the families are going to be able to know what they are going to be able to, um, pick out per se when they get to the book fair. Um, and I guess what I'm hearing is Dr. Green is indicating that maybe that all books won't be on that list. I guess that's my first question.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, that is correct. They have stated that they cannot guarantee that books won't be substituted based on inventory. There might be a book on the list that they don't have anymore, so now it's not offered and they substitute a title. And that's why we ask, um, have principals to vet the books before the students are actually going through and choosing.
Perfect. Um, I, I, I want to say that I like the idea of a preview list. Because I think that when we have engaged parents who actually are going to, you know, use the strategy, use the reading strategies and all of the, um, additional material that comes with it, if they're going to work with their students over the, um, over the summer. It is a good idea for them to be able to sort of kind of, you know, research the books and see what is interesting to them and their family, maybe the titles that they've never, they've never been exposed to before. So I really do like that idea of a preview list. Um, when we go to the last paragraph of the description, it says during the summer, my parents will be contacted for additional face-to-face and online learning opportunities. Um, I kind of want to know what that looks like. It just seems like that's a very daunting task when you look at every single elementary school that's going to be, um, participating in this. And then you look at the number of families in the district that, um, will be able to participate. So does Read USA actually engage and call every single elementary school parent in the district over the summer?
Sure, through the chair to, uh, Board Member Joyce, uh, what they do, what we do is we send out through Peachjar, um, links to the website with tips, but we also, through our Title One office, will have online, uh, similar to Parent Academy in the summertime. And then we're utilizing opportunities, um, during our summer boost, uh, select summer boost sites to have some face-to-face opportunities. So that's how we've, that's how we've tried to distribute various ways of communication and engagement with our families during the summer months.
Um, and I'm assuming that we did this exact same, uh, we did, we did the exact same, that there's an engaged month here?
We did, very similar.
Okay. Do we have any data that supports how many families were engaged and how many families participated, specifically with the Read USA piece?
Uh, uh, through the chair to Board Member Joyce, I would need to follow up with the Title One office to see, uh, how they collected data. Uh, the online piece might be a little trickier just because monitoring the types of hits come from such a variety of places, even countries. But I can definitely follow up with that office and provide a follow-up.
I, I would like, I would like to know what the data says, you know, how many parents are engaging, you know, how many have been contacted, um, and the response of the parents. Just because I know from working in school, it's really hard to engage parents, especially over summertime. And I think that it looks like the goal of this agreement with Read, Read USA is to really get those parents engaged so that we can kind of minimize the summer slide and the money loss. And that is going to, you know, a hundred percent really require the parents' engagement in that. And so, uh, I'd like to know what the data behind it is and how many parents are engaged and, um, you know, the, uh, really, um, what this looks like. Um, my next question is when we go to preview outcome, um, this question is really around, do we have any data around if, how does this, uh, program with Read USA, do we have any data that would support this specific learning game of, uh, students? So we have these, we had all these schools, they have these, um, book fairs. When we come back after the summer, after the summer, when we do those initial diagnostic tests, are we seeing improvements over the summer, um, to students who manage this, uh, program with Read USA?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, I would not say that you could link this to academic gains. What this links to is more parent engagement, trying to get parents more engaged with reading with their children when they're not in school. And if you don't have a book collection, then there's no opportunity for a parent to read to, to, to their child. And so this program is more about building a, the children having their own book collection and building their own library at home and giving them more access to, to books. But I would not say that you could link this to, um, academic achievement.
Okay, um, that's fair enough. But I do think when I read through this item, that there's a lot of emphasis on parents and caregivers and, you know, supporting that. So I would like to see the data that, um, how many parents and caregivers are actually, um, utilizing the program. Um, when we look at expected outcomes, um, parents and caregivers will be able to integrate meaningful, uh, content and strategies with students to address the learned, address gaps. Um, I kind of want to know what that looks like, what that looks like. I know children come in, they pick out books, hopefully their parents are with them and they're kind of, uh, you know, doing this piece together. What does Read USA, um, what do they do? Like, is there something the parent gets at the book fair, um, that would maybe support additional learning through the content of this book? Is, is that what that means? Is there extra additional materials that's going home with the parents?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, that is correct. We call it a goodie bag. They get additional strategies, information inside that bag. When, um, I think I need to clarify, they don't directly contact Read USA. They're working more so with our, um, community, family and community engagement, our Title One, um, office or the school directly with, with parent, when, if they have a parent night. And mostly, most of the times when they have the fair, they are having a parent night. So because they only get so many books and, um, elementary children go through the couch and everywhere else they can find money to buy all the other things that are not books. That's the part they can't know. And that's when they want to bring their parents and so. Um, it, they're really, just to make it clear, they're really not contacting with someone at Read USA. Read USA is really the entity that's providing the resources, the, the materials, everything that we're giving to parents.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that information. Um, and my last question, I think around this, and I may come back with more if there's other people that want to, want to, um, add some questions. But mine is with the financial impact. This looks like this year, we are using our Title One fund, um, to, um, to fund this piece. And I, it's, it's crossed me at my mom, but I believe I thought maybe last year when we did this, um, we were using Esser funding for this. Um, can you speak to that? Through the chair, Dr. Green.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, um, we're using Title Four. I don't believe we've ever used Esser. It, you may be thinking about our tutoring contract, that's Esser, but not our, um, books. But I will check and, and if, if that answer is different, then we will put it in the follow-up. But, um, it's either Title One or Title Four, and this time it's Title Four.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Vice Chair Pearson chime in with some questions now. By, and, um, Board Member Joyce, if you have any more after we get done with the other board members that pulled it, um, we'll swing back to you as well. Vice Chair Pearson.
Thanks. Uh, well, Ms. Renfro anticipated one of my questions, which was how many languages? So ten is great. You're about two-thirds of the way to having King's Trail covered with the number of languages they have.
Twenty-nine.
But that's awesome. Um, and just, uh, from having worked the book fairs, the last couple of But that's awesome. Um, and just, uh, from having worked at book fairs the last couple of years, which I absolutely love volunteering, um, at these book fairs. Um, when we send the list out to the parents, we may consider having them pick six to ten possible titles. Because if they send their children with three and their child goes to the book fair a little later in the day, once the books are gone from the shelf, you know, they run out. And so I would hate for a child to walk in with three approved titles and be very stressed out because they can't find two out of the three on the shelf. So we may want to encourage families to pick six to ten so that the child has more options of finding something that's on the parent-approved list. Um, that's just more of a logistical thing. And then my, um, other question is on the funding. I was under the impression that this was a partnership where the district was putting in some money, Read USA was putting in some of the, paying some of the cost and Scholastic is covering some of the cost as well. Is that?
Through the chair, yes, this is a partnership. We are not.
Cause otherwise this would be a bar, I still think it's a bargain. But, um, to get that many books for that price, but it's, we're not, we're not fitting the full bill. Read USA and Scholastic have some investment in this as well.
Through the chair to Board, Vice Chair Pearson, that is correct.
Okay.
Um, but I do need to clarify, this year, I've, it's two books this year.
Oh.
Not three.
Um, so we're paying less than what we pay in the past. So it's two books this year.
Okay. Point still.
Yes, but they're, they're, you're paying.
All right, moving to Board Member Jones, you had pulled this item also.
I think most of my questions have been addressed. I will say that I still have my apron.
Yeah.
And I look forward, cause the kids love it. It's, it's very, I think a lot of the kids are very engaged. Many of them, uh, receive that book and sit right there on the floor and start reading it. So I think it does have a positive impact on students' educational outcome. Look forward to it. I just, just, just a little curious about the parent. Who does the contact with the parent? Is, is it the teacher or is it the internet? How do we get to that?
Through the chair to, um, Board Member Jones. So we do a combination. So we'll do Peachjar. Peachjar will come directly from the district office. Uh, and that's a one-way communication and like a flyer. Uh, the schools also will give, uh, each school a, a script that they can send out to their school community. Don't forget, summertime, um, it's very common for principals to do a check-in with their families during the summer. So we utilize that, we provide them with a, with the, um, script and work with them on the best time. So it could happen a little slightly different depending on the school. And then we work with our families and community engagement office when they're sending out, um, their additional Peachjar advertisements with Parent Academy opportunities in the summer.
So there's actually, no one that I can pick up the phone calling each and every parent. That's not happening.
I do not anticipate that. Unless they did, like, when the principals send out information, they will do a robo-call. So that is typically easier than us typing in the message and we'd like to connect them. I say we, cause I still feel like a principal after seventeen years. But making that personal connection is really important to so many of them.
All right, thank you very much.
Um, and I'd like, um, some of my fellow board members volunteered last year, um, in several of my schools. And I will tell you, um, the joy on children's faces when they got these books was unbelievable. And so thank you for continuing on this. And I applaud Read USA for doing their part in raising private dollars to assist with deferring the cost to the district. Um, we're gonna move to, uh, Vice Chair Pearson. You had pulled item number three, which is Second Amendment to the Charter Contract for San Jose Early College at Cecil.
I'm sorry, I have another question. Is this okay?
Oh, yeah, sure, chime on in.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I know that last, last year when we, um, discussed the Read USA piece, um, I think the, one of the follow-up items the district sent the board, um, specifically any board member with, when the book fair would take place, what day and time. And I think it would be helpful for the board to, um, get that information again so that we would not, will know, you know, when these are taking place in our district and if we want to drop in, volunteer or whatever, we, um, we have that information.
Board Member Joyce, thank you. I had forgotten about that. So thank you for that reminder. And I'm seeing nods of heads from district staff and I do know most of us ended up going and helping. So that's a great one. Board Member Willie, I saw you also had a motion. I apologize to both of y'all. I was moving, moving quick.
I just wanted to, to ground us, uh, through the chair. The reason why these started, I remember when we started was because you had schools that either didn't have book fairs, couldn't have book fairs, couldn't afford book fairs. Um, so this is how this event came about is a teacher was like, my kids can't do it. So she worked with Scholastic and Read USA got involved. So it's ballooned into this, which is amazing. So I just wanted to ground us in, 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 in that because that's, this came from that sort of period of hey, students couldn't afford it. Now they can. So it's great that we're partnering and doing this and glad to see this moving forward.
That's great. Thank you. All right. I will move now, uh, to Vice Chair Pearson on item number three. And again, that item was Second Amendment to the Charter Contract for San Jose Early College at Cecil.
Thank you. Um, through the chair to Dr. Green or her phone or friend, um, on this. Is, I'm just a little confused about, is this typical, um, to revise to add a grade, you know, grade bands when they haven't met their maximum for the initial grades that they were approved? Cause it, unless I'm reading it correctly, it looks like, um, they're at a hundred seventeen out of two hundred seventy-five anticipated students for nine to twelve. And they want to add a hundred students in six to eight. I, I'm just, I'm confused about why add, and add middle school when you haven't filled the high school and what they're thinking.
Through the chair to Vice Chair Pearson, um, this is not uncommon.
Okay.
Um, they're trying to develop a feeder pattern.
Okay.
So, high school, that's the last feeder pattern. You're gonna have to go recruit, cause you don't have a current feeder pattern. So now they're asking to amend to add six through eight. So it may help them get to their goal.
Okay. Good. I, I thought also possibly for convenience for families, if they have siblings, it would be one drop um, for younger and older siblings and, uh, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to item number five, Approval of Contract Amendment with TPG Cultural Exchange. I'll start with Board Member Willie.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, this is always an interesting one, cause it, it looks a certain way. But once you dive down into the data or the details of it, it comes out different on the backend as far as the financial piece. So I just wanted, um, that to sort of propose to kind of hear how, how this program works. Cause it's a exchange program, number of years, um, we've had a lot of success, uh, of course. It seems, just want to kind of explain the financials, break down that.
Yes, through the chair to Board Member Willie, if you look on page twenty-three, it kind of breaks down the financials. Uh, when you look at the average teacher salary, look at twenty-two, twenty-three, the average teacher salary, fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Um, with, and that's an average teacher salary. But then you see all this list of additional things that go into a teacher's salary, such as healthcare, retirement costs, social security and Medicaid, workers comp. Um, and then you look at average teacher salary and benefits, it's seventy-one thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-two cents. When we use TPG, we are not paying for the health costs nor the retire, um, retirement costs in the first two year, um, health costs in the first two years and no retirement costs, um, through the life of the contract. Um, and you'll see that we are saving dollars and it shows down at the bottom, the saving cost in the first year is about two thousand seven hundred dollars. That's the first and second year. Um, now, we do have to, we do pick up costs in twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. However, most of these positions are positions that we can't find individuals for in the first place. So, so the cost is one that, yes, we save in the beginning, but we do have to add cost towards the end. But they are filling positions such as ESE where we can't find people. And these students deserve to have a certified teacher. And we are finding that many of these teachers are doing outstanding jobs for the last two years. We've had one in the top five for Teacher of the Year. And, um, if I could remember his name, Mr., Mr. Matt Gill, won two years ago. What's for me?
Oh, that's right. Was he from TPG? He was from EPI.
EPI. I knew it was one. I was afraid to say TPG, but it was from one of them.
From this year too.
So.
No, and I, I wanted that because I think this is an interesting program because of how it breaks down sometimes people. And what's always interesting about recruitment costs with the district is you don't really know how much it really costs to recruit a teacher. So this, even if you get to the five thousand dollar mark at the end here, we don't really know. Like it can, it could really be five thousand for some teacher that's right down the street because you have to go, you have to recruit, you have to go to all these fairs. So I think it's gonna be interesting for us to figure out this puzzle piece of TPG, EPI, other recruitment strategies to get to this whole. Um, and I think this is a good strategy to do that. The last question I have is around, there's always that question on the backend. And we got into this, I'll, I'm gonna keep harboring on it in the backend because folks have to go. They have to leave, especially some countries, they make them go for a couple of years and come back. Some are different. So I'm just wondering, I, I would, wondering about our strategy in the long term to say, all right, you're gonna go. And I know Mr. M texts me every day and he's like, hey, I'm ready to come back when it's my time to come back. So I wonder about our strategy long-term because if you have folks who come in, the twenty or thirty come in, they have to exit out, but then two years from now, that group can now come back, not under a TPG, um, contract, but on their own. So I just wonder about those kinds of strategies too.
Through the chair to Board Member Willie, we have maintained the stance that we are not engaging in, uh, the district picking up visas to, and we support, yes, you have to go back. And if you want to come back to TPG or you come back on your own, we gladly accept you back. Um, because it is not, it, it is a tremendous cost to the district if the district chose to, to, to do that. I believe it's over ten thousand dollars per individual.
It can be.
It can, yes. And it, it, it kind of just blows everything out of the water of what we're trying to accomplish. Yes, we're filling positions with people who love what they do. But after that, then you're now starting to pick up costs, costs that would far exceed what we do for recruitment to, uh, be keeping, whether keeping the individual or, um, going through the entire process.
I still feel like there's, there's something here. Um, there's something, there's some nuance there. I think that there's still ability to explore. So I'm, I'm glad that we, we have this and it gives us smart tools to look at different pathways. So, thank you.
Board Member Carney, you had pulled this item.
Through the chair to, I'm piggybacking a little bit off of what Board Member Willie was talking about. So, um, through the chair to Dr. Green, this amendment, is this, so this amount, the not-to-exceed amount, is this the current contract or are we adding funds from the previous? I wanted to know what the previous contract amount was versus what's currently stated here. Um, and that's only up to two hundred teachers. So am I right?
In the prior, through the chair to Board Member Carney, in the prior contract, it was four hundred and fifty teachers. And we're now requesting to add fifty more. And so this is additional.
Okay, so it's on top of what we are.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then I guess my other question was about, so much of Board Member Willie. So where, this is, you know, as far as how long we're able to contract these teachers, this is a case-by-case basis based on what country they are coming from, right? Has nothing to do with, does it have to do, it has to do with the United States visas they're, they're receiving? Has, it doesn't have to do from where they're coming from? This is a federal requirement?
Through the chair to Board Member Carney, yes, it is based on their visas.
Okay.
And what, what we get periodically is once they're, this is for four years, there'll be individuals who want to stay. Well, they, they can't stay unless the district says, well, we'll pick up. I'm, I'm probably not saying all the correct terminology, pick up your visa or something. But we would have to pay, um, somewhere around the ten thousand dollars to do that. Uh, they can apply for, and, and Mr. M applied, but he did not get selected. There's, there's a process that you can apply to extend your visa. But the federal government decides who, whose visa gets to be extended. And so if it's not, then they have to go home for a year. They can then reapply to come back through, whether it's EPI or TPG. Yes. Or they come back for citizenship or whichever direction that, that they're trying to come back to work for us.
Understood. I just, the reason I ask is it's such a shame to have these amazing people come in and work with our students. And then it's, and then we lose them. And then we lose them. And it's kind of a revolving door. And that's why, that's why I asked that question. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, Board Member Joyce, you had pulled this item.
Yes, thank you. Um, my question was more around the total recruitment piece. And this may be, um, may not, you know, may, it, it may not be answered right now. But I'm wondering, we put a lot of effort in, um, recruitment, teacher recruitment as the board, uh, as a district. And that's board-driven. We want to recruit highly effective teachers. But I would like to get the overall picture, the big picture as far as all of the recruiting methods and what is the district spending on teacher recruitment? Like I said, I know this is a board proactive, but I, I, for me, would like to just see the, the big picture, um, as far as teacher recruitment and what that looks like and the different methods that we're using. And, um, how much are we spending on teacher recruitment? Um, so I don't know if that's a workshop or if that's something that can be, um, uh, put in our follow-up. But I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. Chair, go for that. Um, I'm interested in that table picture here.
All right, and I appreciate that. I'll, I'll, um, let the superintendent, um, make thoughts on it.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, we can do either, we can make it a workshop topic or just send the information.
Um, uh, maybe if we could get a cursory sending the information and then maybe let's look at a scheduled workshop at some point. I don't think it'd be bad for the public to see the big picture of how we do it also. Um, because it's pretty complex, what's going on in our HR division these days. Um, so it might not be bad. Um, all right, um, anything else, uh, Board Member Joyce?
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, Board Member Jones.
I, I just had a question about the health cost. I think Dr. Green said it only covers the first two years. Is that correct?
It covers, in the last two years.
We pick up the cost in the last two years?
Yes, we, um, we, yes.
All right, very good program. I had a Teacher of the Year this year, uh, who went through this program. So, so thank you.
And Vice Chair Pearson has given me a signal that she has a question as well.
That's more of an idea, uh, but it addresses maybe, um, Board Member Willie's, there's something else there. Conversation, uh, there may be a lobbying opportunity on the federal level to have teachers designated as essential workers. Um, I just know from a personal friend who's from the Bahamas, who just finally got her green card. Um, and she was gonna be at the last minute. And just in conversations with her, um, she indicated that teachers were not essential workers, but childcare workers were designated as essential workers. And so that may be, I would be willing to look into that more if we would be interested in engage. I'm always trying to figure out what we can engage federally with. And that may be something that would be helpful, is looking at the, this, elevating the status of, of teachers as far as who we're prioritizing coming into the country.
Um, I think you just proved why you're ahead of the legislative efforts on behalf of the board in that moment. Um, and yeah, I will say there were puzzled looks. Um, and yeah, I will say there were puzzled looks all around the room when you said that childcare workers were, but teachers not, like how does?
And I, this is from a conversation with a friend who was going through it, so I could have misunderstood. But I, I think, I mean, I talked to her enough about it that I think I'm.
I think that's awesome.
In the right area.
Good thought.
Through the chair, real quick on that, I think one of the major issues is the countries that folks are coming from don't want to drain their country of the educational talent either. So that's why you see them having to go back. So that's, there's this like push and pull between, hey, you want all your, your talented folks who have degrees and all this stuff to come here, so. But it's a, it's an interesting conversation to have to see. Certain countries are going to be more flexible than others, but I think it's worth having the conversation.
I agree, I agree. Great thought. Um, we're going to move to item number nine, which is adoption of budget resolutions, February twenty twenty-three. Board Member Willie, you had pulled this item.
Here's just a high level, uh, question through the chair. I know it mentioned like four statutes and state education rules, so I just wanted to make sure we were aware of why this is coming towards us to make sure we're all on the same page. And I saw the, the number of different sort of pieces there around food services and capital funds on it. So just wanted to kind of high level on that.
Through the chair, I'm going to ask Ms. Bagley.
Um, through the chair to Board Member Willie, so this item is a, um, is a regular agenda item. Um, we are required by statute that anytime we amend the budget from what you originally approved in September, we're required to send those changes to the board for approval. And so that's why you see this every month. We have budget transfers that occur every month. We've also not just um transferring funds between expenditure lines, but we're also, if you look on the first couple of pages, there's also a summary of what types of new revenue has come in that has not been previously um budgeted. And so there's a lot like, um, we've indicated there are a lot of statutes that relate to it. This is just the summary. By statute, we're required to provide the detail of what makes up the summary. And that's why there's a link in there. We don't include the detail because it's about five hundred pages every single month. And so once the board approves the item at the regular board meeting, we make the link active on our website so people can have access to the detail.
Thank you.
Good, sorry. Moving to item number ten, additional services, independent audit servicing. I'll start with Board Member Joyce.
Thank you. Um, through the chair, Dr. Green, I, 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 I know that the district has been dealing um with, you know, since we've, we've been behind in our internal account, uh, auditing our internal accounts, um, and within our schools. I just, for the uh purpose and for the um, for the public, I'd like for you to kind of just go through and explain, you know, where we are and why we have to be um in the contact.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, um, I think it was over a month ago, Ms. Bagley met with the board uh in an audit, I, I don't think it was audit committee, but it was a workshop, uh, sharing the, the issues that we're having with internal auditing. And a lot of it surrounds vacancies that they have in internal auditing. This contract will bring an outside um firm, M S L P A, to come in and help the district catch up its internal audit. The, these audits are for our schools and schools' internal funding that they, um, whether, whether they're raising it through fundraisers or athletics or how they raise money at the school. This will hopefully expedite getting our internal audits caught up. It also is an opportunity to see, do we want to continue this process of having an outside firm come in and, and audit our, our schools?
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I would, I, I think I would, I remember having a conversation with Ms. Bagley. But I do, I would like if you can in the follow-up um report that the board's going to receive, um, if we can do a cost analysis, um, basically, you know, comparing what it would cost if the district, if we did have this internally versus what the cost of the district if we went to completely doing this externally.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, yes, ma'am.
All right. Board Member Joyce, any other questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you so much.
All right, I'm going to go to Vice Chair Pearson and I'll swing back to Board Member Willie.
This may help. So my question is, written last night, what is the combined salary and benefit cost of the vacant audit director position and the two vacant staff auditor positions?
Through the chair, who did that information?
I think Ms. Bagley might have done.
Oh, Ms. Bagley might have talked about her, right? Okay, I don't.
Through the chair to um Board Member Pearson, she asked me this question last night, so I was able to research it. So currently in the internal audit department, we have a vacancy in the director position. And also we have two auditors that are vacant. So altogether, the three positions in salaries and benefits, just those vacancies are around two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Um, and Mr. Board Member Joyce asked for a cost comparison. So in December, the board approved an agenda item to do the three years of operational audits. The three years altogether were two hundred and eighty. Two years of that that we need to budget for this year, so the agenda item was for one eighty-seven, five hundred. If you include for this year only, the, the remaining amount will be budgeted for next year. If you add the one eighty-seven, five to the fifty-five for one year, that's two hundred and forty-two thousand. So we're spending two forty-two, but we are, we have vacancies of around a hundred, two hundred and forty-one. So for what, this first year, it is a sort of a break even. Next year, we will be spending the ninety-two, five for the twenty-three audits. If we, and also, I already, I lumped in the fifty-five for, for this current year just because of the, the budgeting purposes. But if we were just going to look at just the operational, one year of operational, one year of um financial, those two plus together would be one forty-five.
And I'm going to um ask that if you'll do an analysis of that and return, and return it to the board, just in fairness, um, because that was a lot to absorb just sitting right here. Um, and I think some of us, like me, might want to read that a second time. Um, and in fairness to Board Member Joyce, who's having to just auditorially process, um, if we could get that and follow up, that would be awesome. But thank you for having that, those numbers ready to go.
Absolutely.
All right, um, moving over, Board Member Willie, I saw you had um signaled to me you had a little something.
Yeah, um, real quick off that, through the chair, that was, that two forty-one was salaries and benefits?
Salaries and benefits.
Yes, yes, okay. Um, my question is, when, when we sort of push these in, internal audits out, someone still has to get the audit back and sort of approve it on our end? Like, isn't, isn't there still sort of an administrative piece on our end? I'm just wondering about, yeah, it's not all done, there's still a part that we have to do, right?
Right, so through the chair to Board Member Willie, so the auditor, we're engaging the auditors to actually perform the audit. However, on our end, we have to, you know, make the schools aware that they are going to be performing the audit. We also sometimes have to assist the schools in gathering the information. Um, for audit efficiency, they request that the documents come to the district. So we will either, I will either have staff who assists the school bookkeepers to go pick up the records or have the schools deliver them. So there is some effort on our part in order to complete the audits.
Yeah, I think we're, when thinking about the full cost, the sort of administrative sort of support pieces are important to kind of think about in there. But I'm really int- interested to see like if this is going to be a commonplace thing or if this is something because I feel like we've been in this spot for a while, it's hard to hire auditors. Um, but wondering about if you have a director, is, is that director even really doing any, some of those audits like that anyway? So I think there's a lot of questions, but I'm, I'm interested to see those numbers and some other things. So thank you.
Thank you. And I will um echo the sentiments, I'm interested to see the numbers. But I want to remind everyone, as the former person who was a principal of two middle schools, our principals are operating blind right now until these audits are done. And we hold them accountable for the accounts received in their schools, and they can have disciplinary action. And until we catch these things up, the problem is owned by all of us collaboratively. Um, so whatever we need to do to get these schools caught up is imperative. Um, anyway, it's imperative for our principals to get the support they need. Um, we'll move to item number eleven, agreement with Centajects LLC. Um, I have Board Member Joyce.
Hey, you're here again.
Hey, hey.
Um, so through the chair to Dr. Green, um, I know that a lot of people know this service is Raptor. That's the Raptor app that we've used before. We're moving away from that. So my, um, my first ask through the chair to Dr. Green is can you just explain why the district wants to move away from the Raptor app? I know that we kind of had this conversation before, but I think it would be beneficial to the public. And then I have a follow-up question about the financial impact.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, um, our desire to move away from the Raptor app is, one, many of our schools are very old and cell service is interesting at best. And so even though they could hit the button, if, if it's just not the right moment that cell service is hitting, it could delay the response time for indicating that there's an emergency. This particular product um is not reliant on that. The, the teacher or employee is simply wearing a lanyard and it's a, a matter of just pushing a button. Uh, there is a alarm system, if you will, that will be installed into the school. So not only will law enforcement know that there's an issue, everybody in the school will know because they're hearing, they're hearing uh the alarms go off. And the great thing about the alarms is they're transferable. So I don't want to say it's like sticky tack, but it just goes up there. And if we consult, you know, we're building these, we can just take it down and go put it at the next school, so.
Uh, Board Member Joyce, anything else?
Yeah, the follow-up question is, um, I know normally when we receive these um agenda items, there's a previous like um outcome as far as expenditures. So can we talk about um what the district was spending, spending previously on the Raptor app? Um, and then, you know, versus what we will be spending on this, um, this new app that we're going to be spending on.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, um, the Raptor app was paid, it was paid mostly through our allocation from D O E. So I believe we receive about two hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, and it costs about two hundred thousand dollars a year. Yes, this i- this item is going to be more, but we believe it gives us way more than um what we were currently receiving from the app. Uh, it ensures that we are doing um everything possible to keep our students safe. And if there is an emergency on that campus, it, it is very easy to ensure that all, they don't have to look. Not everybody's carrying their phone on their person, but if you're wearing a lanyard wherever you're going, it's on you. So this, this is immediate. It, it is a way to ensure that everyone on the school campus can hear that something is happening because the app does not send out an alarm. This product does.
Very good. Thank you for making that.
So we still receive the two hundred thousand dollars from the D O E, so two, two hundred thousand dollars is offsetting.
Yeah, I, I, I know we do. That is, is that, is, um, when we look at the financial impact and it, you know, subsequent years, um, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, is that minus the two hundred thousand?
Through, through the chair to Board Member Joyce, yes.
Okay, all right. I'm good. Thank you so much.
All right, I'm going to um move to Board Member Carney and see if she has any follow-up questions.
I think my questions have been answered. Thank you.
All right, and then I will say, uh, Board Member Pearson had pulled this along with fifteen, but we're going to treat eleven if we can because I've got other people who pull fifteen as well.
Um, I think Dr. Green answered my question, but I'm just going to ask it again. How will we treat schools that are identified for demolition or late-term replacement? Will they receive the same level as a school that is standing or newly built?
Through the chair to Vice Chair Pearson, yes. You could go as I said, pull it off the ball, take it to the next location.
Okay.
I'm sure it sticks a lot better than me just pulling it off.
You're making.
They're like a man hook.
A man, that's what I forgot manuscripts in my head, like.
They might end up in the dorm room.
Yeah.
Duck tape.
Uh, anyway, all right, we'll move to item, little comic relief there. Uh, we'll move to item number twelve, which is Proofpoint. Uh, Board Member Joyce, you had pulled that item.
Um, yes, I did. Through the chair, Dr. Green. Um, in the previous outcomes, it said that the product is already being used in the district. And whenever I go down and look at financial impact, uh, currently we're spending, it looks like, um, a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars on this. And the proposed funding is going to increase significantly um to, I think, twenty-three, twenty-four to three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Kind of wondering, and maybe I missed it in the um item, but I'm kind of wondering what um is the cause of the increase of, of, in the expense of this item.
Through the chair, I'm going to ask Mr. Culver to address your question, Ms. Joyce.
Yes, good morning. Um, through the chair, there are two major components in this that are causing the cost increase. Number one, we're adding all the students. Uh, currently, the students are just using the free Microsoft product, but we're going to move them into the Proofpoint solution. Um, also, we are going to add some additional um features that I would rather not go into great detail about that cover administration. Um, including one of the big ones is currently our spam filter doesn't cover stuff sent internally between people. So if I send something to the superintendent, the superintendent says something to me, it doesn't go through the spam filter because it's an edge appliance that looks at stuff coming in and out of the district. This new system puts additional hardware inside the district that actually will, will scan email. I do anticipate that that is going to cause a little bit of a delay as it goes through the system. So where normally you might be sitting next to somebody and send something and it may take a little longer before they receive.
Board Member Joyce, any follow-up?
Um, yeah, I have some questions, but I think I'm going to, I'm going to take them offline and just get with Mr. Culver um individually.
All right. Um, we'll move then to item number thirteen, which is purchase, installation, configuration, and maintenance of an uninterruptible power supply U P S uh battery backup. Again, Board Member Joyce, you had pulled this item.
Um, yes. Um, I specifically pulled it through the chair to Dr. Green. My question is around the recommendation. Um, the last paragraph that we are going to delegate authority to the superintendent to execute subsequent annual renewals. Um, I have um some concern around that just because the item, um, is so expensive, two hundred, two million dollars. Um, personally for me, you know, anything with an item, um, with that large price tag on it, I kind of would like for that to come back to the board annually. Um, but that, you know, basically is my comment, that I'm just not comfortable with the last paragraph and would rather um it come back to the board. But I wanted to give you, Dr. Green, um, you know, the ability to kind of defend this position.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, um, yes, the, the price tag is a little over two point four million, but it is an E-rate item and that is an eighty-five percent then um reduction. So the cost of the items are not as voluminous as, as stated. But in our recommendation, we're always going to show what is the true cost, but the E-rate makes it eighty-five percent. The reason I would defend letting this move forward uh under the superintendent's delegation is, one, one, we have to have it. It's, it's not an item that we could say, you know, we, we don't have to do this this year. Um, or it's not an item that is controversial. So eighty-five percent of two point four million is down, you're now talking a couple hundred thousand dollars. But I will do whatever the board's desire is.
Thank you. I think one, yeah, that was my, um, you know, I, I see that it's, you know, that it's eighty-five percent E-rate and I'll, you know, whatever the board's will is, that's fine with me. I just kind of get a little uncomfortable if it's not in, before us, that we have eyes on it, that we're sort of understanding. These are, these are sort of large amounts, even if it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, um, that we are, you know, approving. So that was really my reason. I, I'm never comfortable with large amounts of money not coming back before the board annually. Um, that's my position, but again, whatever the will of the board is, I'm, I'm good with that.
Any other questions? Alright, moving, um, to item number fourteen, cybersecurity licenses. Uh, Board Member Joyce, you had pulled this item.
Same, it's really the same, um, the same little question is that, um, if again, really wanting to, um, consider bringing it back to the board every year instead of just, um, it's that we don't have eyes on it.
Um, uh, Board Member Jones?
Uh, question, uh, these through the Chair, Dr. Green, these are competitive with bid, is that correct? You know, the last one was, I'm not sure about the cybersecurity licenses, less you.
Less you.
Less you. Through the Chair to Board Member Jones, not this one, no.
This is.
Through the Chair doing, this is the item that we had at the chair meeting?
Right.
Oh. Thank you.
Um, right.
That answers the question.
Yep. Um, alright, we will move now to item number fifteen, if we could. Um, I've got audio visual equipment and supplies discount bid. I'm gonna sh- start with Vice Chair Pearson.
My question's the same as it was on eleven. Um, how are we gonna treat schools that are identified for demolition or late-term building replacement?
Through the Chair to Vice Chair Pearson, it, it will not impact them. They are slated to be on schedule and will be able to receive, and I believe this is transferable. Means it can, I don't know, they'll say pull it off the wall.
More command strips.
It can move.
It sounds, because it sounds like schools that don't currently have them, we're, we're filling in. We're going back to the schools that didn't currently.
Yes.
Yes. So everybody, end of this, every school should have this equipment, even if they're scheduled for demolition or, um, they are five, ten years down the road on, uh, their renovation.
Through the Chair to Vice Chair Pearson, yes.
Okay.
Alright, moving to Board Member Joyce, you had pulled this item as well. Any further questions from you?
Yes, I do. Through the Chair, Dr. Green. Um, in the financial impact, it's a process of only fifteen million. Um, and then it's obviously coming from, um, different source, funding sources. May we please get this broken down so that we know what's coming out of capital, what's coming out of general? I know some of this, you know, funds that we receive from this, um, from the federal government. But basically, really wanting to know, um, a district fund, um, taxpayer dollars as far as, you know, uh, what is in our general and our capital, what is being expended there? Would like that breakdown and then if we could please put the amount in the recommendation, um, I would really appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, I'm gonna move to Board Member Willie, you had also pulled this item.
Yes, through the Chair. Uh, first of all, uh, Jim Colbert, I know Dr. Green runs every time you come, um, because every item on here is high dollar, but so critically important, I wanna just make mention of that. Everything from the security, um, which I know it's far more advanced than the one we have before, which I think is important. But also this, I'm just wondering about this one. It says like interactive displays. Like, is that all we're talking about are there, or are there other pieces? So that's the first question. The other question is around, it says we're talking about streamlining, streamlining our ability to do it. So we're looking at how far out are we talking, like, when we talk about the sort of actual implementation having these things in the school?
I mean, through the Chair, so basically this is our entire audio visual bid. So while it's primarily, we're talking about the interactive monitors that we need to complete, right around seven, seven hundred and fifty elementary school classrooms are so lacking in interactive monitor. And so that is gonna fill that. But then what happens with this, with this bid, it becomes our district catalog for AV that everybody in the district purchases off of. That includes, um, money that might be spent from Title I and might be spent, uh, we know exactly what I'm spending out of S.R. But what schools are gonna spend on that, I don't really know. Um, what Title I spends on that, we don't really know because this is a long-term bid. We put a number on there kind of based upon what the district overall has spent. But the sources of money could come from anywhere. You know, this also would cover like a, an office, um, if we had an administrative office and they wanted to buy a monitor for the conference room, same bid. Okay. So, um, the idea of streamlining this is, is basically when we put our catalog together, we start s- working with select vendors that then know what the district processes to get stuff basically from their factories directly into the classroom. And that's, a lot of the, the work that was done on this bid was to get pricing that went from, I don't care about anything else in the world, I wanna know what it's gonna cost to get this interactive part into the classroom, period, end of story. And that's what you're betting on. And so that's how we're trying to kind of like streamline it. Alright, so, thank you.
Can you also speak to, when you streamline this process, the maintenance on the backside so that our district's only dealing with certain equipment that we know how to maintain and how that affects personnel and, and being able to fix things in an efficient and effective manner?
Thank, thank you. Um, um, through the Chair, um, we try to select s- specific items where we can, we can support them. For example, we can't go out and support fifteen different monitors types, right? Because we have to carry, we have to carry parts, we have to carry spares. Um, so we tend to select two or three different vendors that provide us those large devices. Um, and then we get factory trained and we get factory certified, um, so we can do the work. And very often, these contracts will allow us to have spare units, um, placed into the district so we can easily swap things out.
Thank you. Uh, as a board, sometimes, I know that's kind of in the minutia of your work, but the complexity that IT deals with is pretty amazing in this day and age, so thank you. And I will say, as someone who, um, supported elementary schools at some point, thank you for the continued emphasis. Um, elementary teachers and principals have been begging for equipment for years and I'm grateful that you're finally shoring that area up. I know budget has been what it is and you had to concentrate on secondary for a while, but it's nice to see you in that space, so thank you. Um, moving to item sixteen, um, approved site access agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Services at Alden Road Exceptional Student Center, number two fifty-two. Uh, Board Member Carney, I'll start with you.
Um, through the Chair, I have a couple of questions. Um, one, I wanted to know if we know what was found in the groundwater? Um, and if it's in, if, if we do find it over at Alden Road, how much of a safety issue is it? And then what would be the timing for this process to be completed, should we go forward?
Fantastic.
Chair, I'm gonna ask Mr. Soros, answer him, Miss.
Through the Chair to Board Member Carney, the, the cause of it is a fire academy which is adjacent to the Alden Road property. So it's the chemicals they use, suppression foam, things they use to fight fire, that's what I think seeped into the ground. Um, generally speaking, if you have ground contamination, like we have right next door, ground damage site, there is a cap, you know, over it, asphalt, something, several feet of dirt, and you're not pulling water out of it, there's really not a hazard. But this is the process that determines that. We give this access agreement, they're gonna come back to us and tell us how bad. The biggest issue is irrigation wells. There's no irrigation wells per se feeding any kind of water into the school. Uh, it's close to, there's an irrigation well over at Sandsburg, we have my way. And there is a small irrigation well that feeds into a pond, that's where it's at, because I don't think that's active. But, uh, they'll check those to make sure there's no contamination in any of that water. So at this point, it doesn't appear to create a renewed hazard. We're going through this approval, then you do wells and give any feedback at the next step.
Okay. Through the Chair to Mr. Soros.
Um, so do we have kind of a preliminary plan if we need to go in and mitigate those areas? You were saying, you know, add additional dirt or put asphalt over a certain area?
We would not have a plan. It's gonna come through FDEP and likely go back to the originator. As far as if they have to do something.
Okay.
And a lot of times what they do is in, in C2 remediation in place, like next door, we put pipes and you run water through. It just goes on for years. But we're not at that point yet. We don't even know if there's any contamination. That's gonna be the purpose of the line.
Okay, are we on FDEP schedule for this to be completed in the near term or?
I don't, I, I don't know what their schedule is, um, but I, we can find out.
Okay.
This is just, you know, this is the step and process we're having.
Thank you so much.
Board Member Jones, you had pulled this item.
Uh, thank you, through the Chair. Excuse me, through the Chair, um, Dr. Green and Mr. Soros. The, the remediation, if there is in it, would be on the, the, uh, who would pay for that remediation? If there is contamination?
Through the Chair to Board Member Jones, typically it goes back to the offender.
Okay.
So in this case, if it was the city of Jacksonville, fire department would go back to them. And the remediation would start to, you know, their site and then it goes out to the extent that it needs to. Typically in the ground.
Hmm.
So you may see an excavation to place piping and, uh, and then it's closed back up. Uh, it, it, it would get to that point.
Liability wouldn't be with the district.
No, liability always goes back to the originator. Thank you.
Vice Chair Pearson?
Those are my questions, please. So, same question.
Well.
I think we're good on that one. We'll move to item number seventeen. Uh, pre-qualifications of construction contractors, uh, for educational projects. Um, I have Board Member Willie.
Yes, through the Chair, I just wanted to call out, I think we've been talking a lot about some of our OEO work and as you look at the contractors that are upper pre-qual, this time they're two that are OEOs. I just wanna just commend the work that we're doing to try to get more folks on board and in the pool when it comes to this kind of work. So we're just excited to see that and I'm sure there's, there's more to come. So just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna move to the grouping of twenty-one through twenty-seven, twenty-one through twenty-nine. I had different people group it and, and those two categories. Um, so, and that includes, um, these are the selection and award of design services, professional consultants, um, for the prototype at Inglewood Elementary, which is twenty-one. Um, uh, Pickett Elementary, which is item number twenty-two. Uh, Inglewood Elementary, item number twenty-three. Um, I'm sorry, risk agreement, uh, for, uh, Inglewood, um, Elementary, twenty-three. Risk agreement, uh, for prototype at Pickett Elementary, twenty-four. Um, construction management at risk agreement for RL Brown, which is twenty-five, twenty-six. Risk agreement for new, uh, prototype at Lewis Sheffield, twenty-seven. Um, award of design services, cover professional consultant, Spring Park Elementary, twenty-eight. Um, award of design services, professional consultant, prototype Lewis Sheffield, twenty-nine. Um, award of construction management at risk agreement for new prototype at Spring Park Elementary School. So I'm gonna do those collectively as a group and I'll start with, um, Board Member Carney.
Through the Chair to Mr. Soros. Um, the, my, my questions are predominantly on the architectural services, so not the risk management. Um, so these bid numbers, are these including all design disciplines or are these just architectural? So are we doing mechanical plumbing?
Uh, through the Chair to Board Member Carney, it's gonna be to an architect engineer firm and then they will get the subcontractation through the complete design, so it's a complete design.
Okay, and then the other question I have for you is, do we have, do we have cost per square foot averages over the past, I don't know, five years or so on these projects, um, for these, for this service, just as a comparison?
Through the Chair to Board Member Carney, typically, there's a percentage range. Uh, if you go, DOE has actually a website, you know, it'll tell you six percent, seven percent, eight percent, based on how difficult you. You know, if you have, uh, a renovation rehab, you know, it's, it's gonna be higher or lower. In this case, this design is a, these are, a lot of these are reuses, right? Because maybe it's, it's, it's the Pearson model and it's the South Side.
Thank you.
Yes, those, those two models. And the state requires you to reuse prototypes where it's advantaged and useful, you can do it. So that's what we're doing. So if you go back to the Pearson price back, it was like one point eight million or so. And that, that's back when we thought the school was like twenty-eight million. Now you're seeing costs gone up to forty, forty-two million and you'd expect the cost to be two point five, two point eight, even three million. You're seeing it at one point six. So we're seeing a benefit in, through the reuse of a prototype and keeping design costs level or even, even lower as opposed to having them go up. If we went back out to a whole new vendor, you'd probably see this design come back at two and a half or three million. So we're seeing, we're getting a cost advantage by reuse.
Through the Chair, that, Mr. Soros, that was, that was my next question. If this is, if we're reusing existing prototypes or if these are all new prototypes? So I'm just trying to gauge the cost on this. Thank you so much.
Board Member Jones?
I think that, that was my concern too, and thank you, Mr. Soros.
Alright, uh, Vice Chair Pearson, you had pulled these as well.
I have, um, and I think Mr. Soros harshly answered. So we have a total of two prototypes and now with Inglewood, we're starting to reuse prototypes and adjust them slightly.
Through the Chair to Board Member Pearson, that's correct. The exceptions are gonna be like the Highlands where you have to reuse an existing building. And we're talking to elementaries. The middles are unique and the high schools are different. But where we can, uh, have a complete rebuild and not have a reuse, we're gonna try to go back to one of these two prototypes based on how, where they fit, what street they face, they front on and size and how, and how it fits onto the site.
So this is gonna completely reveal my ignorance in this area. But if we are reusing a prototype, why are, what is the cost that's one point six million dollars when we're already using, we already have the plans, we're already using something we know how to build? Why is it costing so much to build it again in design fees or architectural engineering fees?
Through the Chair to Board Member Pearson, so that, if we won out right now for, for, for the design, for a forty or forty-two million dollar building, you'd expect a design fee to be two and a half, three million. That's what we pay now. Uh, we paid, you know, close to two million, one point eight when we did it the first time. So you're seeing a cost reduction. The piping is different, the tie-ins are different, the power feeds are different. And if, if I went into designing academics and I said, here it is, we're done, they would say, oh, really? No, I need three ESC, not two, and I need this classroom over here and can admin go over here? So you're reusing a lot of design templates and design units and design standards, standards. But they gotta be moved around, refitted, so that's the rework that you're paying for.
So is it.
But it's still a lot cheaper.
Is it fair to, in my mind, is this fair to say that the fee that we're paying is really the cost of customization for a particular school?
To, to a degree, but, but a good significant portion is unavoidable because the site specifics for utilities and power and sewage are different elevations. You have a sloping site.
Okay.
Now you gotta do foundation changes, there's, there's uniqueness every single s- site, civil layout. And then there are always gonna be different numbers of ESC rooms, different numbers of school departments. So the answer is yes, and it's, a lot of it's driven by necessity.
Okay, and then I just have one other thing on this. I was out walking with a friend in my neighborhood and we walked by Hendrix Avenue Elementary, which is way down the list of getting anything, but there's the banner out. And she said, um, I'm so glad that DCPS is putting these banners out to show when work is being done at schools. When work is being done at schools because it helps us, you know, understand that that tax we voted for is being used. And in a school like Hendrix where, you know, one day the portables will be replaced by a new wing, but I don't think it's gonna be anytime soon, it helps that community see that, that that school is getting treated as well. And so I wanted to commend that program, uh, the banner, um, program and let you know that community members are noticing and remarking about it.
Well done, Dr. Pierce. Um, I think Board Member Jones, you wanted to swing it, and then I'll give Board Member Willie.
Uh, thank you, through the Chair, Mr. Soros. Are we still looking at, when we build on site, are we doing it? Are we relocating those students somewhere else? I think there's some cost savings we discovered with, with, uh, Mr. Pearson that was more cost-effective to relocate those students than, than to try to build or reconfigure the new site, new school on that site.
Through the Chair to Board Member Jones, it, it, it's really gonna be site-specific. Where there is adequate room, uh, like South Side Estates, we. It, it, it's really gonna be site specific. Where there is adequate room, uh, like Southside Estates, we, um, we have that whole park area to the south, which is ample room. And we have the laydowns, we have the space. If that can be done efficiently. And then it's gonna be, you know, cheaper to, to, to work there and not disrupt and move the school. Cause the whole, there's an added school move cost, actual cost. In addition, in addition to disruption, that you have to factor in. And it's essentially cheaper, it appears to be cheaper to, to do it on site. If you have the land, that's what we do. Sheffield, we're buying a piece of property where we can, but where we can't. Uh, because really tight sites, which we have a number of campuses, which is too small, then, uh, then we are gonna do the move. So it's really driven by the amount of space available. We can't really do that efficiently.
Are any of these schools being, uh, considered requested in these schools be a hurricane shelter?
Some are, uh, I'll have to get the exact number. We, the, the real expansion on the shelter is more towards the northwest side. Cause it was just such a huge shortfall. So you're seeing like Pearson, Pickett, those places will have. Uh, I, I think Revault will not because of its location close to the scene through the river and what have you. But where we can, but it's much more to the north side. It's gonna be driven by the deficit. Some of these schools, I don't, I don't think all of these schools are, but some of them maybe I can try to find out.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, we'll move to item number, um, and Board Member Willie had pulled this, but he gave me the signal that his questions have been answered, so we're good. Um, Board Member Joyce, item number thirty, renewal of the custodial services management contract. Board Member Joyce, you wanna start?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Um, so my concerns around this are that we have to the end of the agreement with, um, APS facilities. They have been used, we've been using that for the last, um, it looks like three years, two years. The contract has come to an end, so we're asking the board or the district asking the board to approve. Um, we, we, um, entering back into another agreement with a potential, I guess, four-year extension. Um, my question is, did, did the district, so to the chair, Dr. Green. Did we, um, competitively, competitively bid this for a renewal? Like did we reach out to other contractors to see, you know, what, um, cost savings we could get? Maybe potentially in the future.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, no, this was not, um, done to an RFP. And Mr. Soros may need to add some additional information.
To the, the chair to Board Member Joyce, when this contract was put out. It stated clearly in the RFP, there was a two-year base period and four one-year option renewals. So that's when you effectively compete for the entire six years. The, it is up to the board, obviously, to grant those renewals. If the, if the board were not gonna grant the renewal, then we would have to go back out and competitively, try to competitively award a new contract. Um, so that's, that, the competition occurs back when the original RFP is awarded, uh, with the base period and all the potential renewals.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Um, I don't think I have a kind of question.
All right, good. We have one more item and then we're gonna take a stretch break. Um, so one more item, um, approval, no pun intended, seriously, stretch break for everybody. Uh, approval of this item number thirty-one, approval stormwater credits purchase agreement with the city of Jacksonville. Um, I tell you what, I'll start with Vice Chair Pearson and then Board Member Joyce, I'm gonna get to you next.
So, uh, through the chair to Dr. Green or designate me. What exactly is this? Why is it so expensive? Is this a one-time or recurring fee and can this be negotiated? There you go.
To the chair, Board Member Pearson. Anytime you take green grass and you may get less able to absorb water, which is what an astroturf field does. You have to construct retention ponds or some method of treatment on the site. If you cannot, because of space and constraints, or there's a more economical way, such as buying stormwater credits. So the city went out and did a lot of work to create excess stormwater treatment. So they get credits back. They have, they have a bank of them that applies to the entire county. So it's gonna be okay if you don't treat over here, as long as you've got compensated treatment over there within the same county. So it allows people like us to buy those credits and apply them. Cause currently they're unused sitting in a bank. And then that gives us the credit we need for treatment. So that we don't, otherwise we would have to construct a whole retention pond with piping and culverts. And it's a lot more expensive than ninety-five thousand dollars and you lose that real estate. So this is the least economical way. The architect engineer will always look for this.
Okay.
Is this possible? And if it is, they're gonna strongly recommend it. And that's what we're doing. And it's, you're gonna see this on future astroturf fields as well.
Yeah.
Uh, as long as they're available. At some point they run out, then you gotta do the pond and piping.
And is it, um, like per square foot or how is it calculated?
It's calculated, uh, based on the amount of, uh, lost runoff. You know, lost treatment basically, cause that field takes up so many, so many square feet. That's gonna calculate a number of treatment that's needed. And then that's transferred to the, uh, how much, how much credit that is. And that's how it's, so it's done through engineering calculation.
Thank you.
Um, Board Member Carney is gonna pop in with a question and then Board Member Joyce, I'm gonna come to you.
To the chair, to Mr. Soros, super quick, cause I wasn't a part of Riverside being approved. So did we go through the same process with the turf at Riverside? And are we going to be using this process going forward with future fields?
To the chair, to Board Member Carney, when we did Riverside, it was the first one. And I'm speculating, but the city just had a kind heart for astroturf fields and the NFL and they just gave them to us. So we showed up again this year saying we need another amount. And they were like, you know, we can't keep giving you eighty, ninety, hundred thousand dollars a year. So you're gonna start paying. But the first one for Riverside, they actually just gave us.
Okay, but we will probably be using the credit system going forward.
We're gonna be paying for these ones. And they're not gonna give us hundred thousand dollars a year.
A former Riverside graduate.
Could've been, no.
Could've been, could've been.
They had a soft heart too. I was, we were shocked and we asked again, they said no.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I, I, we can continue asking. You never know, maybe there'll be a new person and they can say yes. Um, yeah, we, we are on election day. Um, let's see, uh, Board Member Joyce, we're gonna take a stretch break after your question. Go.
Um, I, I didn't really hear, um, what Mr. Joyce said about Riverside. Um, I have the question, but I didn't really hear the answer. So can I get someone to re, um, to reiterate that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Soros.
To the chair, to Board Member Joyce. When we did Riverside, we had the same recommendation from the same architect engineer. We went to the city, they agreed to donate them, give them to us for free. So we, we signed a similar agreement, but it was zero cost. So it didn't have to come to the board. That was between cities. Now that we're, the second year, it, back last year, it was like eighty-three to, around eighty-three, eighty-four thousand dollars. This year, we're at ninety-five and they, they really just can't afford, unwilling to donate it, so we have to purchase them. That's why we have the agreement. This year, we didn't have a cost agreement last year with Riverside.
Okay.
You can hear that?
Um, I did, I, I get that, yeah. So I, what I'm hearing is the city donated, used that last year. They're not willing to do that. Um, is this a one, I guess this is a one-time fee for, um, Inglewood? Ninety-five thousand dollars to do the mitigation, I guess, for Riverside, for Inglewood High only?
To the chair, to Board Member Joyce, yes, this is the one-time cost.
Okay, and so as we move through, um, as we move through and we, um, put the synthetic turf for other schools. I guess we're gonna run into this fee for each one of them.
To the chair, to Board Member Joyce, that is correct.
Unless, we were kind of hopeful that maybe, you never know, if another person occupies the position at the, at the city and decides to be philanthropic again. Uh, we, we thought we might ask every year, you never know. Um, we might get a free one in another couple of years.
Maybe we could get a punch card.
We, you know, it could be like a BOGO. We buy one and, and, you know, we get one free. I don't, anyway. We are encouraging Mr. Soros to continue to ask each year, even though it may not be successful.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this point, we are right at eleven o'clock. For the purposes of the audience that's watching, uh, we are gonna take a ten-minute break, uh, to stretch. Uh, now we've got a couple of members that will appreciate that. Um, and then we're gonna do the grad rate.
Okay, at one point.
Absolutely.
Um, through the chair to the board, um, we, for Riverside, we did not receive the NFL astroturf grant. Which is two hundred thousand dollars, but we did receive it for Inglewood. So we are applying each time to also support the cause for these that we get, that we can get from the NFL.
All right.
So.
Finding money, good. Um, so we will take a quick, thank you for adding that information, cause it does make a difference. Uh, we will take a ten-minute break and again, for the purposes of the audience, we will do grad rate presentation at that time. We did have a publicly noticed meeting for eleven o'clock or whenever this meeting concludes. So this meeting is con- conclude a little after eleven, but that meeting will happen as soon as this meeting concludes. And with that, we'll take our ten-minute break. We'll be back in about eleven, twelve.
Are we adjourning the agenda committee?
I'm adjourning the agenda committee at this time.
Aye.
Do you need a motion to that?
Um, I was gonna read the public, actually, let's, let me do the public speaker and then we'll do it. I'll wait it back. Let's do it, cause I still have public speaker. Um, she is still up in DC. We're both in DC. That's how I ended up at first, but my laptop isn't working. She's gonna go and come back. I'm talking, I'm talking for a while, so I'm just gonna get. Not yet, but event, eventually I. See you later. Let us know, let us know how that works out for you. We're good? All right, we are gonna reconvene at this time. Uh, we are on the public comment portion of our meeting, but we do not have public comments, so I'm gonna move on. Um, and we are gonna move to actually adjourn the agenda part. Um, can I have a motion?
I'll move.
I have a motion by Board Member Willie and a second by Board Member Jones. Um, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That passes unanimously and we will go ahead and close at this time. Hold on. We are now gonna move into.
You gotta switch.
Oh, wait, she's switching. Sorry. You know, I was thinking we just gave you admin time and it's for technical, not for that. I apologize. Board Member Joyce, you still there with us?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Did you get your stretch break in?
Well, yeah, yes.
Okay, we're just checking on you. You good? Good? All right, so we have, uh, adjourned our agenda committee meeting and at this time, we will reconvene our board workshop. We have two topics for today, graduation rate update and then governance. Turn it over to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will turn it over to Mr. Wright, our Assistant Superintendent. And Ms. Renfro.
Oh, and.
Good morning.
For the purposes of this, I, I tried to look for a natural, I, we'll go through a few slides and then we'll do a checkpoint on questions, kind of. But let's let him get through a little bit of it.
Yeah, I'll just follow your lead on that. Um, before we get started on this presentation though, in your board packets. There is some information to help us prepare for commencement for this year. If you could fill that out at some point today, we'll collect that, make sure you all have the appropriate stalls, robes, caps, all those things, the right colors. Um, get all that ordered in time to get new ones if for some reason something comes in incorrect. So we'll capture that today, hopefully, um, after governance or whatever.
Just everyone, everyone to do this evening if we have one, hang on.
Even if you have one, please do it again.
Okay.
We will, well, we wanna make sure everybody has everything they need. And I don't mind having an extra in the closet in the event of an emergency or whatever. So absolutely, please just, I would ask everybody to fill that out.
And if you don't get it done in here, to give to Mr. Wright, if you just give it to, um, Gail Collins in our office and he can pick them up from there.
No, we, right.
Either one, okay.
So, thank you.
Sure, no, always.
This, uh, today's presentation is really a combination of two different presentations. The graduation rate always comes out, maybe late December, most recent years, it's been usually, uh, the second week of January. Because it has to, it comes out after survey five, all the end of year data from the previous year's captured. Allows for industry certifications to be captured along with all those students who pass tests or earn credits over the summer. So any student working over the summer ends up including in the graduation, um, data. And that's why it comes out in January. So I know on the oversight calendar, um, there's a presentation in February. Which is typically just the release of graduation rate data. And then there's also one in April, which is kind of an update status of where we are now. So for today, those have been combined. So it is a little bit longer than typical. But, um, we never really had an opportunity to go through last year's grad rate. And then with it being so close to April, we just figured we would have that included as far as the current status. So, um, you all have probably seen some of this data from the release of the twenty-twenty-two grad rate. But we ended at the eighty-five point six percent, um, for this year with sixty-nine, ninety-five graduates. A cohort size of eight thousand one hundred sixty-nine. Um, on these slides, you're gonna see a lot of information. I'll break it down on this one so that you're familiar with it. The bars across the top are the Duval County's graduation rate compared to the state's. The state is there in black, Duval is there in blue. So you see, um, we've always hovered near or just above or just below in recent years, the state for the, uh, twenty-twenty-two graduation rate. We, we, what, or one point seven percentage points, I think, if I did that math right, below the state. Whereas last year, we were just like half a percentage point below the state. Um, the numbers below represent the percentages and numbers of students who did not graduate. Um, dropouts, uh, consist of students who are coded as a W fifteen or W twenty-six. Um, a withdrawal for non-attendance or whereabouts unknown. So those are students that we don't know what happened or where they went and they're considered a dropout. The C.
Can I, can I, to the chair. Hover on whereabouts unknown. Um, in the past, that we, I don't wanna say it's not been a big issue, but when COVID hit. It has been a huge issue and unfortunately, it's really only at a couple of schools. So, uh, Inglewood.
Was Terry Parker the one?
Terry Parker.
It was definitely Parker.
Yeah. Um. Lot of families left the country and just left, did not. We, and they are, they're gonna go into some very elaborate what things that we do to go try to find these students. Um, but that is really the two, I would say, one of the two big issues impacting Inglewood, Terry Parker. Is this whereabouts unknown. Um, we believe we, we found a solution, sort of, sort of, sort of a solution. So our solution is that, um, in your enrollment, we need you to also sign your withdrawal. So it's kind of catching you before you, if you just decide up and leave, we can't find you. Uh, and most of these students have basically just left the country or left our state, went somewhere else. But they're not in school, cause they couldn't have gone to another school, cause another school would respond back to us saying, I need their information. So that has been a huge problem, specifically for these two schools, is this whereabouts unknown.
And a- as far as that enrollment information that we hope to capture, really hoping to capture more information. So that we can better identify where students may go if they end up disappearing. It's not like we're withdrawing, enrolling to withdrawal or, or anything like that. It's really to identify where they may go in the event they do disappear. We're capturing as much information as we can. So we can get in contact with the parent. We're required to get information from the parent. And only the guardian or parent that says, I've gone to another country and then I can apply that withdrawal out of state, out of country code. But it's the parent has to inform us of that. Oftentimes, we find that. Oftentimes, we'll find that a neighbor or somebody they work with or a friend will say, oh, they left the country, they went home, they went back. But I can't apply. They went home, they went back, but I can't apply that return to the state, out of state or out of country code without parent information. So, and, and so that we've seen, we're trying to increase access to information so that we can better identify where they go and maintain contact with parents in the event they leave. So just trying to capture more information upon enrollment. Then you see the, the COCs up there, the, that certificate of completions. Students earn a certificate of completion if they do not meet the testing requirements. You can also earn a certificate of completion if you have all your credits and just don't have the GPA, but that happens to very few students. Uh, so that's primarily, and you see the last two years, it was 1% and, and 4% of COCs. Remember in the class of 2020, the class of 2021, there were no testing requirements. So I put it up there for reference that WCO is the six per, 6.7%, the 8.3%. That, that is the percentage of students who graduated without meeting testing requirements. So the 2020 and 2021 graduation rate, we know they were really inflated compared to previous requirements. It was just due to COVID, some of those requirements changed. And then for the 2022, testing requirements were put back in place. I'll go into that a little bit more in a few slides. But then we also have the adult ed, the GD programs all count as negative codes in terms of calculating the graduation rate. And then the other non-graduates, those are really W-01s, W-02s, trans, they're, they're students who identify as transferring to go to another school within the district. And, um, for the most part, by the time that they're seniors and graduate and then still have that W-02 code, then the intent is that they are coming back next year. So oftentimes, it's, it's a fourth year student who's an 11th grader. And so they don't have enough credits to promote or they're still trying to earn that diploma in the following year. So those other NGDs are not students that just disappear. A lot of times they do, they're, they're trying to do something in a fifth year. And then the, the colorful circles at the bottom give you an indication of the year in which the negative code was applied. Because we have ninth graders that end up being withdrawn for non-attendance or whereabouts unknown or go get GEDs or whatever. So they end up as a ninth grader negatively impacting your graduation rate three, four years later. So you see in the 15, 16 cohort, we had a small number of ninth graders, a larger number of 10th graders in green, a larger, even larger number of 11th graders in orange. And then our largest population dropouts happen, or negative codes, I should say, in 12th grade. So that's kind of what all of those numbers, bars, circles represent. And even though we saw a decrease overall and a decrease compared to the state, there were some successes in the 2022 graduation rate. Our African-American subgroup, we are still graduating a higher percentage of African-Americans than at the state level. You see the green bars higher than the black bar. So we're still outperforming the state with our African-American subgroup. And you see the, the, the percentage of dropout actually decreased, but it was the COCs that really, the testing requirements that really, we saw a significant, um, increase in number of COCs, which counts against the graduation rate. And you'll see that trend in every subgroup and overall for the 2022 grad rate. Uh, Caucasian students still, we've consistently been below the state. We're closer to, to the state and with the class of 2020 than any other year, but, um, about two, two, almost two and a half points lower than the state with our Caucasian students in terms of grad rate. Alright, this, this was an area in which we struggled, Hispanic and both, and ELL. There's a lot of Hispanic students who are also ELL, so you'll see that on the next slide. But this was an area in which we saw the biggest drop along with ELLs with the 2022 grad rate. And you see a 30, uh, high percentage of COCs there. Um, dropouts actually decreased with our Hispanic students. But there's also a higher number of those other non-grad codes, most likely coming to school for a fifth year. Or maybe they were whereabouts unknown. They said, I'm withdrawing to go to a school within the district, but then they never show up. So, and, and just based on the information we have, we just couldn't change that code in any other way. And then, um, here's ELL students. And, um, you see similar trends as the Hispanic students, really the COCs, you, you sees significantly impacted this group along with, um, those other NGDs compared to the 15, 16 cohort. Really not considering the two in the middle where testing requirements weren't there.
And you can imagine, this was really concerning to us. And our director of Esol for Languages and Dual Language was quite devastated and felt a great ownership of this work. They have done so much. And she's like, what, what, where did I go wrong? We can see the data that, uh, Dr. Green spoke to the impact of COVID. The impact of COVID really took a devastating hit to our L population. We already know and, um, I'm really proud of this work, uh, Leadership Jacksonville. So for the past two years, the Education Committee has brought a lens to our ELL population so that the community really better understands. And we have students and principals that speak to this. And, um, we've had a couple of different students over the past couple of years. And one of the things that they say they still struggle with, and I'll give you an example this year, just to kind of create context and tell you what we're doing next, but this young man is amazing. He came from Honduras in the eighth grade. And he says, even though I've been in the country for three and a half years, I am still speaking Spanish in my head. Like, I have to ha, it's not that I can't do it, I need the time. Cause he see, he receives it in English, he makes that translation, this is common. Makes that translation, comes back in English, then has to come back and process again. Like you can imagine the, not only, not only the agility, but the fortitude to do this at every moment of the day. And now you have credits, you have a, a test that you're expected to perform. Two years, you're given two years and buddy, you better get it, right? This is another thing, we talked about the increase of our L population this fall, just the exponential increase. So what we're looking at is not a short-term reactionary fix. This is something that we have to grab now and do it ex, very drastically differently than how we've created supports in the past. We're seeing, seeing even more students in this group comprised of that group because after the onset of COVID, not only are they coming into the country not knowing the language, but they're coming into limited or no education in their home language. So they might be speaking Portuguese or, but they can't read it. It's all auditory. So you can imagine what that means. Some of the things, um, even starting more intently this year, and we've already, we've always been very intent with supporting our L population, but really looking at that differently. We have to be innovative in our thinking. And increasing that parent support because you see the data shows us that we've got to make a more concerted connection, even more than we've done before. Providing those interpreters, providing that regular connection, we are here for you. We have the, um, our CLC, which is utilized to a great extent. But how do we, how do we connect even more families? They are, um, adopting more kids, like specifically by name, those weekly check-ins. We have a dedicated school counselor at Inglewood High School. We are lit, we've expanded, um, our support services at Terry Parker High School. Like really creating very strategic decisions for the students based on what we're seeing. I mean, this is incredible when you look at this data from year to year. And I know that we have COVID, but this is a very poignant slide because it speaks to, um, creating a strategic plan, not just a reactionary fix. Because this is something that's a part of our community now.
Um, I just, so I'm, we were talking about processing the one, the one student you were talking about from Honduras. I would think it'd be exceptionally hard to if at home, the only language that is spoken is their native language. So even at home, getting support from parents is more difficult because their parents probably are not speaking English. So when it comes to help, even though I'm sure the, you know, the parents that are involved and wanna be active, what are we proposing or what are we doing now to help on the parent side of things? Because I know a lot of times that's really hard is to engage those ELL parents.
Yeah, through the chair to board member Carney, that's real, that's a very real challenge. And what, what our support system, when we talk about making a better connection with families, is how do you provide space? Okay, you're working multiple shifts, how many families are in the household? How can you provide space to allow, um, the child or children just to get their work done? You need a hotspot, we can provide the hotspot, we have that, you know, and I will tell you, one of the biggest gifts that we've had is going from hard copy curriculum to di- digital curriculum because one, the supports are exponentially greater and they can switch languages. Not to a, not to 32 languages, but for many, many languages. That has been very, and helping the kid really understand that those tools are for them and talking to the parent of, okay, he has this going on. Especially like our Inglewood or Terry Parker, our school counselors, they're closely watching where their schedules are. But then the not, the added layer, um, is where are they when they're not in school? Because that, that issue is growing too, trying to find them and get them reconnected. And there are times when they're responsible for putting food on the table. So mitigating those barriers and, um, looking for solutions that look different than they did five years ago, you know, before COVID.
Um, we'll stay there, let's go, let's go through the data slides and then we'll ask about the data. And then we'll, if you wanna do it that way. Okay, because we've only got two more, got two more, yeah. No, no, you're good. It was a great question. It was relevant to the moment. Yeah, you're great.
And so you see that, you see, uh, similar impact with low SES students. A number of our ELLs and Hispanic students fall into that low SES group, so you see similar impacts there. Um, however, our students with disabilities, we saw, we saw an increase in, in grad rate. They're still outperforming the state, um, as we have for the past four years. The one, one thing to note here, a vast majority of our students with disabilities do have the opportunity to waive testing requirements if they are meeting certain things within their IEP. So, so you see that COCs did not impact this group nearly as much as we saw with others. But, um, those are some waivers allowed by the state.
So we'll stop there. Questions on the data points? Any questions there? Board member Cassie? Yeah, comment?
Mine is a policy question that relates to data. Um, I have two questions. One, um, if we could get state law change to allow students to take standardized tests in their first language for the two, for maybe two years, do you think that would help with our pass rates?
I think that yes, that would help. However, um, there, for this year, there is a new rule allowing for ELL students who are new to the country within two years to be exempt from the reading test.
Okay.
So then, well, but it does not apply to the math test. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna help as much as I think the legislative change intended, but it is gonna help.
So I was thinking if they're exempt, if they're exempt for the first two years and they don't count against our school grade for the first two years, then the next two years, they have the opportunity to take in their first language. It's more of a weaning or a gradual stepping into the pool versus jumping into the pool.
Absolutely.
Situation. Then my other question, this comes from the meeting that, uh, board member Jones and I were in with Representative Bean and Representative Fox on the federal level. There was a bit of discussion, if you remember, about algebra testing requirement. And this was in the space of CTE. That there were many people around the table who felt like algebra was not really beneficial to some students. They would not be using it in a career path that they might be taking. And, um, something like consumer math or an alternate math exam would be more useful and representative of what the student is learning in relation to a career path. Would, would that, does that sound right?
Oh, absolutely. I think that, um, and you're gonna see this morning, some of the impacts with the PERT going away and that could help alleviate some of that for, for an appropriate group of students.
Through the chair, I would still recommend that they still had to take it, absolutely.
Oh, of course.
I would never want to say, oh, okay, so I'll go take consumer math in my humble.
Right.
You don't pass it the first time, here's this, another option that could be tied to career. I just wanna make sure we've never pigeonholed a student, is that right?
Exactly. I'm not saying discourage students from taking or even have algebra not be a prerequisite for a program. But the conversation around the table is how many people remember the algebra you took and how many people use it in life versus a more useful math. And, and maybe consumer math is the wrong.
No, no, I heard, yeah, I did hear that little part.
But, but use a math that's more useful is maybe more representative of something that a student.
Well, through the chair and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Renfro, this upcoming school year, we will have to teach financial literacy and we are using a math.
Right now, currently, we have math for data and financial literacy, um.
So that is something that's, that's, that's now going to be required or so. It's, it could be a way to kill two birds with one stone.
And that's kinda, that's kinda where I was going. As if this is required, could it be added as an option?
So, I, I think that would be a great option as a, another concordant score.
Right, I, yeah, I think anytime you can add an opportunity for a concordant score, whether it be an ACT, an SAT or another test. I will say though, I think for public consumption, because there are people that watch this, math can be a universal language. Um, and our, our, our second language students actually often do okay on Algebra I because it is, they, that's a common language. And if they came from good schooling from wherever they were, they actually translate really well on that. So anyway, so I, and like Dr. Green, I just wanted to make sure that I stated too, that, um, I would not want us to get 20 years ago, we kinda tracked and we don't need to get back to that. Especially knowing that the, the data does bear out that the second language child doesn't often do poorly on the Algebra I, um, EOC. Um, and geometry, I know you were kind of looking, we did, the state did do a way with the geometry a couple of years ago.
I'm not, I'm not discouraging anyone from taking algebra, I'm just looking for another pathway.
Concordance scores are great.
For students.
Um, other questions about the data points, any? I will say, oh, go ahead, board member.
Really cool, you through the chair. We talked about in the L slide, slide seven. Said, um, our L population grew a great deal. Do, what are the, what's the comparison in like full, the full numbers of, the full cohort of, of students in that 69%, they graduate 69% versus last year? I just wondered about like whole numbers since we saw an increase. Or if it even showed up in the grad rate versus showing up elsewhere. If we know that.
I think it's a bring it.
Okay.
And then my, I, for the record, um, I'm just gonna state that the concern that I have with all of this is, and, and Dr. Green has already looked at it, she's already addressed it, she addressed it publicly, that the gaps with the state are problematic, that we are increasing, um, where we need to be decreasing. The, the gaps with the state are problematic, that we are increasing um where we need to be decreasing. Um, and you can see it almost in every area with every cohort. When you compare the fifteen, sixteen cohort to the eighteen, nineteen, and you can't compare the middle two. That's not fair to anybody. But when you compare those two, um, you know, our, our gap with the state, it's problematic, except I think in that area of the students with disabilities. Um, but I, I just, to me, when you track grad rate data, it is imperative that you track where you are in relation to the state average. Because that says, are you performing amongst where you need to do in comparison to other districts? Um, and I will say some of the gains we made, particularly as it relates to African-American cohort, um, we lost some of that. Um, there's no question when you look at those gaps and, and again, but that's something, I mean, Dr. Green's already talked about that and she's aware of that. And we have done great work in this area and we were gonna hit a ceiling at some point. And we definitely, we hit our, we were gonna have a bump and we've had a bump. And so how do we respond to the bump? Is my question. Um, you wanna move into the current status and existing barriers piece?
Yeah, so all that data was related to twenty-twenty-two graduation rate, old data. Those kids have been out of the district now since last June. For the most part, right? So now we're gonna move into our current cohort group and what we're looking at. There we go. So this is concerning across the top, right? So this slide represents and shows some of the, the legislative changes with the testing requirements. If you would recall, with the class, the class of twenty-twenty-two, last year's seniors, the, the cut score change was supposed to go into effect. Um, however, sometime in the spring, it was in March. Uh, memo came out from the state indicating they're gonna delay that change for one year. So last year, the twenty-twenty-two graduating class still had the opportunity to use the SAT at a four-thirty, the subtest at twenty-four, the ACT reading at a nineteen, along with the PERC assessment for math. So students were able to use those assessment scores in red with the twenty-twenty-two graduating class. However, for twenty-twenty-three, those scores are no longer, or assessments are no longer available. Now you need the scores in blue. So SAT moved from a four-thirty to a four-eighty. And ACT moved from a single reading score of nineteen to a combined score between English and reading at an average of eighteen. And then you see the only change with math is that the PERC is no longer an option. So there across the top, you see what the impacts would have been for the last two graduating classes. In twenty-twenty-one, if we would apply the current cut scores, the graduation rate for the district would have been sixty-nine point seven and for twenty-twenty-two, it would have been sixty-five point nine. I do think that how, the, the ending graduation rate would have been higher than that because students would have continued to attempt to test, right? They were notified in March of last year, there were still tests available after March, but it would not have been as high as eighty-five point six. There is a significant impact there. And with our current nineteen-twenty cohort class of twenty-twenty-three, as of today, sixty-two percent are um meeting those testing requirements and are on track to graduate. This is just withdrawal code status for our current and upcoming cohorts. We started the year in August with nine hundred ninety-seven students identified as um a negative code. One of those codes that are a whereabouts unknown, W uh attendance, withdrawal for non-attendance or those transfers that hadn't been picked up somewhere, whatever. So we've identified really almost three hundred of them throughout and that number continues to change. That number from this point moving forward, that can increase or it could decrease. Um, it's more likely that it will decrease because we put a lot of effort into continuing to search for those students. But there is a possibility that it could increase because students can go find jobs and decide not to come back to school tomorrow. So and that, that, so that's always a moving target. And then you see our, even our current ninth grade group, there's already a hundred and fourteen of them that are identified as a negative code. We don't know where they are or they said they were going to school and we haven't received a transfer, a records request from wherever they were going or whatever. So we're not able to change those codes yet. So those are numbers. We're always going to look for those students in different ways. We go look through their accumulations folders to look for information. The grid team is using social media and, and home visits with the art team. So there's a lot of different strategies we'll go into, but um that's just a current snapshot as of the beginning of March. And then this is, this is all, this represents all of our inactive students. So again, that's that seven hundred and five that moved from nine ninety-seven in August. So they're currently inactive, not in school, but they, again, these numbers could change one way or the other. Every, every day we're searching for students, we're trying to get information from parents. Of course, our goal is to decrease that number of seven hundred and five um to reduce the negative impact on overall graduation rate and just help connect students to resources, right? Even when we connect with students, um, there are times where we recommend adult ed or GED just because it's right for the student. It's a student that can't finish this year because they have been disengaged or they have circumstances that haven't allowed them to earn enough credits. So we will recommend GED or adult ed if the, if the situation calls for it. Because we want the student to be connected with something and maybe they're just gonna be too old to finish high school based on their credit status. But um of course, our goal is to reconnect them with a school that earns them a high school diploma, but sometimes that's just not necessarily possible. Um, here is, that's that same sixty-two percent as of today. Um, sixty-two percent of our current cohort students have earned at least sixteen credits, met reading, met math, and have a two-point-oh GPA. So they're on track to graduate. You see we're about six percentage points, six and a half percentage points lower than last year's group at this point in time. Keep in mind that last year's group, that sixty-eight point seven-five was based on the old cut scores. So we're really tracking two different metrics there. Um, because that sixty-eight percent had to, they had the opportunity to meet that four-thirty and use the, use the PERC. So, but now it's a four-eighty and no more PERC on SAT and then the changes with ACT. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I do wanna state that the superintendents are continuing to reach out to DOE to state that this group deserves the same um afforded waiver as last year's. This group is the ninth grade group when we went to COVID. This, this is the last, I'm, when I, it, I can't say it's, it's the last group, but it, the last group that was in high school when COVID hit.
Yeah.
And we are saying they were equally as impacted as the groups that you've given waivers to. And then last year, that you at least went back to the old style of scoring. So um periodically, we send our data to keep reminding them, this is what's gonna happen. This is what's gonna happen statewide. This isn't, this isn't just gonna be Duval. This is gonna be everybody. We're, that's going to see these um large drops from, and Coria, I don't know whether they told you statewide, but I think the statewide average right about now is maybe seventy. Maybe, and I'm pretty sure it's not, but when, when we keep sending this information, people are saying, I'm, 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 I'll be lucky if we can get out of the sixties if we don't at least address this one, this, this ninth grade group. So this is the last, the last group that was in high school when COVID hit. Anybody else wanna make a comment on that point?
Through the chair, not, not agreeing with that. Have, have they been, has there been any response to that? Or is this kinda just send it and wait?
Well, we, we've had a response. Um, um, well, we did hear something interesting that I don't, I'm not sure everyone knew that they reverted back to the old score. Uh, there, yes, a lot of people think, oh, look what you did with last year. That's because you reverted back to the old score. This group that was in high school and COVID hit, um, we've been telling you at least for the last two years, they're not going to be able to perform at that level. So we're hoping that this last letter, and it isn't just a letter. They're showing data of every district about, you know, what the potential of not changing it back um would be. And so far, we, we've been hitting a brick wall.
They uh, they need him to reduce the, to go back to the PERC schedule, definitely.
That's what we're requesting. We're requesting to go back to the old cut score of four.
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty and using the PERC. Because what PERC, you can administer every thirty days. So that's very different than on ACT, SAT, even our in-school. We can only do it. So how, I don't know.
Well, there, there were windows. If the beginning of the year starts at thirty days, as the year narrows, you could, as long, the, the rule, as long as there's time for mediation, so.
Uh, well, the math, yes.
There was opportunity to, to assess it multiple times, yeah.
Multiple times. I, yes, and it's very inexpensive.
And it's very inexpensive. We, we still.
Is it still ninety-six cents? I don't, I don't know. That's whatever. Yeah.
That's something like that. And we still have a bank of tokens.
Some dollars, I think. So. Um, so this, this is what we're facing this year with this cohort group.
But I, I wanna make sure that I say to this board and to public that hopefully that will occur and it might give some relief, but preparing a child for the PERC is different than preparing a child for a concordant score in the SAT or ACT. So we, we might see that we do a little bit better if that happens, but we could have done way better. The, the sooner they get, that we get that information and we can get it to kids, um, just like how, how you prep for an SAT versus an ACT is different. How you prep for the PERC is gonna be different. And the sooner we can get that information, it's not like the PERC's just easy and you just wheel in and give the kids a test. It's not, it's, it's not that. Um, our children need time to prepare for that test as well and.
And logistics of just administering.
And the logistics of administering it, proctoring, yeah. Anyway, so if anybody has a conversation.
So I do wanna add the other piece. The other piece is, um, many students get so discouraged that they're just like, even though our school, they do an amazing job with the boot camps, you know, really trying to incentivize, you know, I, we try to brainstorm all kinds of incentives, but I'm sorry. They're feeling like, I'm a senior, I've done everything else and I cannot pass this. I, I can read you some letters that would bring tears to your eyes from students who were writing me and then I have to tell them, I'm sorry, this isn't, I can't change that score. Um, and why did last year's group, you know, that's their, why did last year's group get it? We were in high school when, so it is a really tough situation. And I, I'm still hopeful that maybe they will revert back, but the longer we're in March, if we get into April, it's gonna be, even if they revert, it will be still challenging to. I, I don't know where, Mr. Wright, would you happen to know what our numbers would be if we were using the old?
I have not, I, I haven't.
I'm like, don't poke it out of, on this, don't poke it out of that, but yeah.
My focus has been on the current reality.
I know, you don't wanna spend.
Yeah, I just, those of us at the table as we have conversations with people in Tallahassee, making sure that everybody over there knows this, if they're gonna make a change, the sooner they make the change, the better for our children. Um, it's not just as simple as putting in my front of the curtain. It's all gonna magically go away.
Well, and I think it's unfortunate for the kids that, I mean, some kids just are not good test takers. And no matter how much prep you do and how much, I mean, we have kids that have major test anxiety and have issues and have that much emphasis. And like Dr. Green was saying, even though she gets from all these students that are, you know, I've worked so hard, I've gotten to this point, but this test has given me a really hard time. It's, it's a really tough situation.
I will remind y'all, we've got one more meeting after this as well. We do have one. No, I think we're all passionate about this. Grad rate has been a point of pride for our district for a long time, or not for a long time, for about seven or eight years now. And this is hard stuff and it's, it's the work that matters. But um I do, we do have a board member who's gonna have to leave at one, at some point, so I'll go ahead.
So here are the reasons is why our forty-eight percent of our students are not graduating or not graduation ready at this point. You see uh that six percent increase with ELA and then the, the five percent increase with the algebra assessment. The, the other components online, that's typically not an issue and, and those students are for the most part scheduled in online class now. That's something we monitor, so that's not a concern. The sixteen-plus credits, we, we work with students to earn that. We're hovering about the same little bit higher percentage of students than last year, but um overall, that's not a significant concern. Students have opportunities to earn an eighteen-credit diploma option. Maybe they haven't been switched from twenty-four to eighteen. And then that, that G, you see, we're just a tad bit better with GPA um compared to last year. But for, in, in, in a, the vast majority of those online credit issues and GPA issues can be overcome. It's really that, that, the testing that, that is the biggest challenge. Uh, a quick snapshot of SAT, ACT attempts. You'll see that this kinda mirrors our attendance. Um, we found that schools still, students in schools still aren't taking the ACT on Saturdays as much as maybe they should be. So we have added an ACT school day of testing later in April to, to give students an opportunity on ACT. We are finding, actually, we just got a data file and uh last week that a decent chunk of students did meet concordance course for ACT, so it's promising. I'm hoping that in-school day will also help bring down the number of students needing those assessments. Um, PSAT's really only offered that one time per year. That's not a test that they can continue to take um throughout the year for math. And then here, we'll see some improvements in attendance over last year. Um, it's still not back to where we were with the nineteen twenty, actually, the nineteen-twenty is probably not a good comparison year because we went online at the end of the year and attendance could have been a little inflated. But um we're definitely improving over last year, our, our by-period attendance rate. Um, daily attendance rate's a little bit better as well, but we really, at the high school level, we're more focused on that, that by-period attendance rate. And so, right, pity party, right? We're, I mean, if, if these things, i- if these tests are still um not gonna change and the requirements aren't gonna change, then there's gonna be some significant impacts with our grad rate. But, but we're focusing on, on the reality. We know that this is a challenge and, and we have some interventions in place to, to help get students where they need to be. Um, this button, sticky. So um, I know, I feel like the grad rate is like mine, right? I stay up at night. This is what I stay up at night about and struggle and try to brainstorm and what can we do to help these students? I know Paula feels the same way. And Scott, he's traveling today in Tim Simmons. They, they feel like it's theirs. We all feel like we own this and, and want to do right by students. And it is a team effort, even though individually, we feel like it's ours. Um.
I don't sleep, you know, not sleep.
I was gonna say, she loses.
Of course, of course, it is Dr. Green's.
When you start dreaming about it, let us know. That's where I know you're at, but it's fine.
Yeah, do you dream about it?
Right, yes. So, um.
I'm dreaming ninety percent.
We, we really um work collectively, have, have increased some support areas, changed how we've done some of our data chat meetings with schools and this kinda, these few slides go into some of those things um that we are doing. Of course, all of the SAS dashboards help identify students and status and what teacher's data looks at the individual teacher level, what, what students are, how students are struggling with different courses and different options to remediate courses. We have our regular data chats um discussing individual students. I mean, we are at the point where we are going student by student with every school. What is the student status? What is the barrier? Um, the, the academic services has team members in those meetings so that they can re- reiterate and give additional resources that are available that teachers or schools may not be aware of or may be new, that we, we just try to brainstorm on those individual student scenarios. I mean, story after story, it's, this student's only ten points away on the SAT and it's like, okay, let's put them on, on this program and we're gonna help them get there. Can we change their uh intensive reading teacher? Would that help? What are your options in the building to, to add additional intensive reading time? So it's really an individual student decision. So it's really an individual student decision at those meetings, trying to prepare them for the next opportunity. Of course, we, we provide assessment opportunities for students, uh, PSAT, ACT, SAT. We, we assist with funding the in-school assessments. There were two SATs this year, one coming up in April, one ACT that's in April. And then when student waivers run out, students get waivers for ACT and SAT. They typically get two if they're identified as being on free reduced lunch. But we help families pay for those assessments. We find ways to help students and parents get access to the assessments, to reduce that as a barrier. Schools show up with their suit on test day. They give them little encouragement packets and breakfast and they, they get buses to the testing locations if transportation is a barrier, help them carpool to really try to eliminate all of those barriers. Parent nights and mentoring and assigning mentors to those students that may be partially engaged. And they're coming to school and they're so close, but they're just maybe not as engaged as they need to be right now. And then of course, we have um, all the tutoring and bootcamps. Both school-based bootcamps and tutoring, as well as some district-based contracts with Mastery Prep and Varsity Tutors. Along with some English, um, non-English opportunities. Uh, Varsity Tutors primarily does Spanish, but they do have some additional languages that we've connected some students to when available. The language tutoring through the ESOL department and the newcomer program, working with those seniors. So there's a lot of different support in place there. And then just, just that re-engagement piece, because codes matter, right? And how, and, and that's how we tell the state what happened to a student. And we, we, we have to make sure that the coding and the attendance and, and the withdrawal codes are all accurate, but also appropriately supported. We have to have the right documentation to apply the appropriate withdrawal codes, which is why that parent outreach and attendance and the AIT meetings, the truancy officer, home visits, connecting with the parents is so important so that we can get accurate information. It's, it's really frustrating when the neighbor or the friend says they moved. And we know that they are moved out of state, but we can't change withdrawal code because we can't get a hold of the parent. So it, it impacts our graduation rate overall. So it's not that the student has disappeared or been a dropout. They may be engaged somewhere else. We just missed an opportunity or the parent didn't let us know or, or whatever. So we're trying to put some outreach information, especially with the truancy officers working with those students that are partially engaged. They still come to school once in a while, they still come to certain classes, but they're starting to fall off. So we're having the truancy officers and social workers prioritize those students so we can re-engage them and get them across the stage or at least have information to follow up on in the event they do become more disengaged. And then our, of course, strategic focus with our Ls and Hispanic subgroups. I mentioned that waiver rule for students in the ELL program, less than two years, that is new this year. Similar to how the ELL students impact the school grade. They are exempt from the ELA assessment requirement, but that, that impacts eighty-seven students and those eighty-seven students still have the same credit requirements and GPA requirement and Algebra I requirement. So all eighty-seven of those students are definitely not guaranteed to graduate because of this new change. Of course, the one-on-one tutoring in preferred language when possible, increasing that access and language support for other specialized bootcamps at the school level for ACT and SAT. And then the in-school exams. We do the um, non-reportable exams for this group of students, which means that the students get additional time to take those assessments. However, they are not reportable for college entrance. They do count for the graduation requirement, but not for college entrance. But we, with this group of students, we really wanna give them as much time as we can, just to get them to the point where they're meeting the graduation requirements. I kinda talked through that outrage and the school-based supports, the small group bootcamps, mentoring, et cetera. The, the curriculum supports with monitoring ELL seniors through weekly check-ins we can support starting this month. Now that we did testing coming to a close, the EA, the ESOL department has some time to commit to working with this group of students. And then the, working with Khan Academy with the math for those students that are struggling there. And then this is just kind of an overview. I'll go through these quickly. We've really covered most of this. Uh, the, the work of the graduation rate team is, is they are really working with withdrawal codes, identifying students, the data chats with the schools, um, working with school choice if there's an issue with the cohort who's coming to enroll and what's the best option to get them to a point where they can graduate. Then there's tracking methods there, JEA and state locator, social media, voter, public records, homes, home and school visits. I mean, they are out on the streets with, working collaboratively, collaboratively with the truancy officers and social workers. We are about to begin our mass communication for the upcoming assessments, making sure students are engaged and in-school on these test days. But, but also engaged now because we have the one-on-one tutoring with Varsity Tutors. We have bootcamps coming up with Mastery Prep. We have school-based Saturday tutoring at some schools. And all these things in preparation, so attendance is important. So we're really trying to communicate, make sure these students are aware of the opportunities to help prepare them for the assessments. Uh, the Mastery Prep Bootcamp, we did this last year. It's mostly online last year, this year it's face-to-face. Oh, actually, this is the curriculum.
Well, we've talked, I, I wanna be redundant. So we've talked about this, but this is, this is the semester where the, most of the emphasis is on ACT and you're seeing some of that, seeing some of that impact. They do still have SAT tools that teachers use, but we've found that um, and it's increasing in terms of um, making sure students are appropriate, in the appropriate course so they can take advantage of both literacy and preparation. So that's been a real highlight to us.
And then more of the one-on-one bootcamps and tutoring with the Mastery Prep curriculum that the teachers use. But then we have Mastery Prep teachers come in a week or so prior to the assessment for schools to schedule small group bootcamps with additional teachers to give different perspective and help prepare them for those assessments. And then we have started the Varsity Tutors, the one-on-one train, the one-on-one tutoring for those students during their courses. But then we've expanded that to students who are able to do it after school or on the weekends. So students are taking advantage of those various opportunities. And thinking ahead to the summer, we have, uh, schools will receive some funding based on school enrollment for grade recovery, ACT prep tutoring and credit acquisition at all the high school sites that happens at each high school. For any students that may need to finish a course and through online or, or whatever opportunities are available. And just real quick, some early interventions. We're in year two of graduation ready. They're working with ninth and tenth graders this year and the schools almost, it's almost like schools are making their many, uh, many grit teams within the school. They, they call them E, an E-WIMS team. I forget what that acronym stands for, but it's really focusing on early indicator, warning indicators, early warning indicators intervention response system is what E-WIMS stands for. So um, really identifying the students that may be at risk at an earlier age so that we're not scrambling when they are in the fourth year. And then Unlock is a small organization who came to us. Actually, they worked with Riverside under a different name a couple of years ago with individual students one-on-one, um, bootcamp type. But they've transitioned to be more of a research um, company where we've, uh, it's a small contract, but they are taking all of our PSA, all of our PSAT data to help review student results and identify gaps in curriculum to get students where they need to be. So that over a long term, we can review what their findings are, determine if we need to look at math course progressions or put different content in the ELA courses in the eleventh and twelfth grade to help students get to where they need to be on the AC, on the SAT. So I'm looking forward to the feedback that they provide in the next few months so that then we can continue to plan for the future and helping students meet the necessary testing requirements.
We could spend about eight hours on that. Y'all brought us an awful lot of information. It was great. Um, thank you. Um, Dr. Green, do you wanna speak to anything before I do questions and answers or anything you wanna, I know.
I would be regretting taking much of that.
Yeah, I know. Knowing what I know, I will say that was an incredibly comprehensive overview. So thank you. Questions, comments from board members, vice chairman?
Is Mastery Prep just ELA?
Um, right now.
Okay.
No, Mastery Prep tutoring is ELA and math.
Oh, and math.
The, the, yeah. The curriculum is just ELA.
The tutoring is both. And then Varsity Tutors, is that ELA and math?
Yes.
And are either of those available in multiple languages?
I'm asking for a specific person, actually.
Yeah, Varsity Tutors is, we, we identify the primary language for them. They could accommodate pretty much all that requested Spanish. They do their best. The other languages are limited. Um, I will have to look into that. If you send me a student number and I can work with Varsity Tutoring.
Other questions, comments from anyone? Board member Joyce, anything from you?
Sorry, I hit myself off mute.
No, you're good. It was a meaty presentation, so thank you.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, board member Willie, look like you.
Yeah, thinking, uh, through the chair, thinking about um, interventions and whatnot. I'm just trying to sort of capture how the data or the understanding from the gaps get from you all and filter all the way down to a student. Um, it's like, is there a teacher or guidance counselor talking? I'm just kinda wondering. It's probably different at different campuses. But just wondering from a practical standpoint, we found out there's a gap and then we have this thread that gets to this student. And I'm wondering about, I, I ask that because the delia of sort of across the board, like, yeah, we know there's a gap, but if a certain student doesn't get it, like, yeah, I'm just wondering about that sort of piece.
When you say gap, you mean gap that an individual student has towards meeting graduation requirements?
Yes.
So really, yeah, that is at the individual student level. That is why we have the, the data chats with the principal. And every school has a designee um, dedicated to working with cohort students. That may be an assistant principal, maybe a counselor, maybe kind of a team of multiple people. But they all come to the meeting. We talk individually with that group. What's the plan with this student? The region superintendent is in those meetings and then through the school visits, region superintendents are in the buildings asking about, hey, where, where are we with these kids? We said we were gonna be doing this. What, what is really happening? And they look forward to be happening like boots on the ground from the data chat meetings.
And I joined this year. So then my specialists and my content people follow up on all the notes that we make that we can impact.
But from, from that meeting, somebody from, from in that setting is going to have a conversation with the student? And is that, is that information captured on their focus or somewhere so they, some, appear, somebody can also jump on there and say, hey, here's, here's your gap, here's what, here's how I'm gonna support you?
Oh, yeah, a- absolutely. I mean, that's typically the, the counselor that works with that student and the parent. And multiple times a year, they're meeting with the counselor to say, these are what your graduation requirements are. And they sign off um, at least twice a year on credit checks, saying you owe eight credits and a math test or whatever the case may be, and this is what your GPA is. And so they'll have those meetings at least twice a year with um, with the parents.
And in those, they can get some of the interventions.
Yep, that's right.
Awesome. And with Varsity Tutors, if I'm a, if I'm a student going in, I just take in what I want or I think my gaps are? What information does Varsity Tutors have before I actually get there?
So we provided with Varsity Tutors the group of students along with most recent ACT and SAT scores and data. But then Varsity Tutors also has a pre-assessment that assesses um, knowledge of each of the components. And then the tutor creates an individual tutoring plan based on all that information.
Awesome.
I wanted to ask for a takeaway um, at this point. I'll kind of prompt Dr. Krisner because she'll be, she'll remember this. When the state originally looked at these test scores and the state board passed the, the test scores and we thought we were looking at them for the first year and then they ended, they pushed them back every year for different reasons. One of the things that happened was the board at that time, Becky Couch, actually Paula Wright, you were on the board probably then too, asked for information. And we did turn it into a one-pager, but um, the economic impact um, for every child who doesn't receive a high school diploma. And you, we looked at it over the course of their lifetime and then we looked at it collectively as a cohort across the city over thirty years, when you compound the six hundred children that don't. And it's a, if I remember correctly, it was a quarter of a million dollars difference over thirty-year work span for the high school diploma versus. There was a million dollar factor as well. But when you start calculating that number by six hundred children, more than normal, not getting a high school diploma, we're talking about hundreds of millions of lost dollars and lost income to our city in terms of buying cars, buying houses, buying clothes, supporting small businesses. That number seemed to resonate and I'm sitting here looking at this table. Every one of us has amazing. And, and board member Joyce, I'm not looking at you, but I'm looking at you too. Every one of us has contacts with state legislators who have to come back and answer what happens in Jacksonville. And no one wants to see an economic issue in our city as a result of something like this. So I, I, I would like to ask that those numbers be updated. Christina Knopf and I did the numbers years ago for the board. Christina is still there. She could pull the one-pager and replicate that. I think it would be very helpful for us as board members to be able to say, this isn't just about a kid and a high school diploma. This is about thirty years of potential lost income in our city. That taxable, by the way, taxable income in our city for people in city council. I mean, it's, um, the economic indicators were massive when you looked over to the thirty-year working lifespan for every child that didn't get a high school diploma and the increases thereof. So I'd like to ask for that because this is a board who works hard with talking with people in Tallahassee. And I think each one of us could have that conversation with, with people who have to come back to Jacksonville and, and are gonna have to support a city that has less grads in it as a result of a, a mere number. You know, it was fine a year ago, but it's not fine now. So um, I would like to ask for that. And other than that, if, uh, board member Jones?
So I was just gonna suggest too that perhaps we can provide information to change with owners who could help navigate for us to.
Oh, you know, they did give it to them too.
We need to make sure they have that information because they have their network of lobbyists in Tallahassee.
You've made great, I will say, board member Pearson's been making great contacts with all of that as well. So um, I just remember those numbers caused people to raise an eyebrow because they were looking at taxable income over a thirty-year works man of a child with a high school diploma versus without. And it's a whole different ballgame. Social services needed, all that. And I will say, we broke that number down and did a projection of African-American grad rate at that point and looked at the losses there and the poverty and anyway, there's, there's a lot there to look at. So anyway, um, any?
Yeah, I mean, to, to the chair, it's, it's all about, we keep talking about ramifications of changes in policy. And this is a huge replication in that change. And economic, if you think about that, even we're, we, we cannot talk about the optics of what this looks like. If, if you have a grad rate that's one way and then all of a sudden it changes across the whole state, it just doesn't look good. Not just for individual districts, but across the state. And we have to go back to, to why this is happening. And there, we cannot not have the conversation without. There's a reason why PERT's taken away. They're trying to, this is, our public schools are gonna have the lowest graduation rates. There are some entities that do not have to have the accountability um, to actually show that their students are graduating and whatnot. So it, it does not create a level playing field at all, especially at a time where um, private institutions and others just can't get public dollars. So we have to also have that conversation because this is very real and it's going to drive people away from public schools and drive them into other places. So that's a real conversation that we have to have and I hope we'll have it because it's not, um, good thing about this, if there's any silver lining, it's gonna affect the whole state and not just certain districts. Cause that's when it gets in like, oh, it doesn't affect us, so we're fine. It's gonna affect everybody. And I'm glad that the superintendents are stepping up. It's time for, and, and we need to do the same. I think we will as we start to have this conversation, so. I think we will as we start to add this conversation. So, thanks for bringing that up.
No, it's good. Um.
Can I say one question through the chair? The mastery prep and the varsity tutors, which can each high school use both? Or how do you, how do you decide which?
Now, each high school has the opportunity to use both. Vars, varsity tutors is really one-on-one virtual. So a student meets a tutor on the computer with headphones.
That's when we approved last month ago.
Correct. That's right. And then mastery prep is more of a, most schools will do like a classroom type setting for two hours with a group of students and then move to another group of students over the course of two days right before an assessment. So really, uh, a quick review opportunity to, for test-taking strategies and as much content as they can get prior to the assessment. So that's the difference between the two.
We are looking at the results, I guess, at the end of the year to see which one is more effective.
Yeah, with vars, it, it is, uh, since all students participate in it all, it's hard to pinpoint which one is most effective, right? But, um, with the varsity tutor contract, it included a third-party study to look at growth of the students participating. And then, um, we track attendance and participation of the mastery prep.
Thank you.
We are going to, at this point, thank you for the robust discussion. Um, and, um, I, I agree with, uh, uh, board member Willie that this is just a beginning discussion. I think there's more to talk about here. Um, and so something for consideration. We're going to quickly do governance. We still have one more meeting that we're going to get to. But if there's anything, uh, quickly for governance, just wanted to do a touch base.
This is actually something we'll bring up in a board policy meeting, but I wanted you to be thinking about it. Is, we have a board policy on public comment that we voted on in the last year. And it's not clear on how we handle the wave cards. We've tried a couple of different options. And if you would like, we can have more discussion about whether we want to continue to try other options or we want to put something definite in our board policy of how to handle the wave cards because it's not clear right now.
And we want to be careful not to talk policy outside of policy, but at the same time, it's good to give warnings that maybe that would come to policy. So thank you.
It's a heads up, be thinking.
Okay. Um, anything from governance?
I just, uh.
I'm, I'm getting to you. Hold on.
Just.
Okay, sorry.
I won't forget you. I promise.
We just need to clarify about when the boundaries change because some of the schools still have, uh, posted the new board. When they technically doesn't take effect until July, I mean, November of twenty twenty four.
Okay.
But I have a principal saying, well, I thought you were my accountant. I said, no. We need to clarify that so the principals know, so that they can adjust their websites to, it affects, I guess. Well, we may Joyce really not more than anyone else.
Yeah, I didn't have any chance. Dr. Krisner, are you, can we get something out to principals, letting them know that the boundary changes don't happen until twenty twenty four? We appreciate their.
We did, but we will again.
We appreciate their eagerness and they're paying attention and noting it. That's awesome. Um, but not quite yet. Um, and so anyway, um, and you know what? I'm, I'll make a note, um, maybe to include it in the board chair report as well. That's not a bad idea. Um, just a quick item on that those don't take. Board member Joyce, anything from you?
Yes, I have a few things. Um, I want to start with, um, the audit advisory committee. I wanted to ask the board, um, we generally receive reports from committees that form like this at a board meeting, a general board meeting. But I, it, and with the audit advisory committee, we are supposed to receive quarterly reports from them. Um, I wanted to get, um, sort of a consensus from the board as to how you want to receive, uh, these reports. Do you want to do it, um, like in a board meeting, a regular board meeting? We've had some conversation around this. And, um, I think there could be an appetite to have the chair present to the board, maybe in a workshop or in an agenda meeting or something like that. And that way, it would give the board members an opportunity to ask questions, um, around some of the topics that they are reporting on. So I sort of kind of wanted to just get an app, you know, what is the appetite of the board? How do you want this material presented to you, um, quarterly?
All right. Um, seeing board member Carney wanted to make a comment on that.
Yes, I think that it should be, we should be able to have a discussion about those reports. I would recommend that we have it in a workshop.
Yeah, I, I will say, um, actually, I appreciate you bringing this up because it was one of the items I had in my head as well. Um, and I think that a workshop, we do, um, we had talked about and we're still, you know, we already had topics on the schedule and we're one workshop opportunity short this month because of spring break, that we were going to go ahead and have a workshop around this item. And just kind of talking through the specifics of it, maybe we could have that workshop as the first opportunity for them to give an overview. And then we could get some feedback as to how that feels at that point and then establish policy based on that discussion. Would that work?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. Just, just the board is.
Are y'all good with, um, board member Willie?
I think that's totally fine. But I think we also said that we would have the report at the general, so we'd have to do both. Is that correct? We have to, sort of, we could hear from them, but then they would still need to publicly keep it out in general, is what I would assume.
Yeah, and I, I think the tricky spot is that having it done, a, a, a general meeting, I agree with you, is good for public consumption. But for discussion purposes, workshop is better. So maybe, uh, let me have, um, let me get with Dr. Green. Again, we had talked about doing that board workshop. We knew it was going to be another month or so out from even this month because of the calendar that we have and the, the things we have to do. Let me get with her about starting there. And then let's decide at that meeting exactly how do we want to move forward? Will that work? But I think you've got to do both if we're going to have the open dialogue with the board and them. But I think for transparency to the public, you've got to have it at a board meeting as well. It's kind of a double duty. Any thoughts, any additional from you, board member Joyce on that?
No, I think that's fine. Um, we can do it that way. Like, I think in that workshop that we might also want to add, um, the additional knowledge and what the purview of the committee, I don't particularly that, we had an in-depth conversation about that. So maybe we could piggyback that, um, in that workshop as well.
I'll add that to my notes on that item. I appreciate that. Any other items for governance from you? And thank you for bringing that up.
I got a few.
Okay.
With the, um, audit advisory committee as well, just wanted to let the board know that there is a subcommittee that is, um, addressing the board auditor evaluation. They're going to do a presentation or there'll be some conversation around that on Thursday. After that, I'll be, work, I'll be setting up a meeting with the subcommittee. I think that's probably the evaluation subcommittee for that, probably just, uh, board member Carney and myself, if anybody else wants to join. That meeting, we're just going to talk about the evaluation process for being from a board auditor. That's what I had for the audit advisory committee.
Perfect.
Okay. And then, um, I wanted to actually bring up the support guide, um, that we talked about last month, um, the, the parental support guide. Wanted to ask, um, is this guide going to be voted on by the board?
Through the chair to board member Joyce, it is, um, not going to be voted on by the board. It is under the procedures. Uh, the board voted on all the policies that govern those procedures in that, uh, student support guide.
Okay. Um, I wasn't clear whether we were, we, we weren't, so I just wanted to ask that question. Also, um, I know last month when we discussed the support guide, um, one of the questions that I had was, um, around the services that are provided and the parents can opt in and out of. And I think that following, you know, the incident suggested that, you know, I think it was a list of services, maybe ten or fifteen, twelve, fifteen of them. And my understanding, uh, based on that follow-up was when a parent opted out, they were opting out of all of those services. Um, I just want to, I would like clarification on that.
Through the chair to board member Joyce, I believe you're talking about medical services.
Um, yeah, with.
Give a list. The medical services, there's a list. And it is all or none, nothing. That's the, the one that come, that I think you're asking about. Because I, I don't, I don't know of any of the others.
That was submitted in the follow-up and it listed, uh, nutrition, but it also listed medical.
Yes.
It listed, um, uh, ther- therapy services. I mean, it was, there was a lot of services listed there. And it was like, if the parent opted out, they opted out to all of those services.
That is correct. Through the chair to board member Joyce, yes, they are opting out of all of those services. And it does, it states it.
Okay. My, I guess my concern around that is when I looked at, um, the House of fifteen fifty seven, there was language in there that said, parents will be notified of all healthcare services offered at their student's school and given the opportunity to individually consent to or decline each service. And so the language in the, uh, in, in the, in the, um, law is that they can decline each service. And I just, I wanted to run that through the board. This is my understanding and my interpretation of the, of the law. And if we, if, you know, if there's an agreement there, which I think it says each service, that maybe we need to revise our parent guide to reflect that.
Hang on one sec.
So, I, I know that that, I'm sorry, uh, to, to the board through the chair, um, and I was looking for the, for the form. Elizabeth Trissoto spoke to that. Um, the services have been grouped in a way that, um, families do have the opportunity to, for example, opt out of, I'm going to say general vision screening, which is an, an individual service. Um, there are some services that are so interrelated, um, that, um, and, and she explained this in a way that if a child goes for, um, to, because their tummy aches and they start to engage the, the child, that conversation would naturally lead to the person that is assessing them to ask another question, which would, could be another service. So they have grouped those types of services in a like manner because of how interrelated they are. And I, I believe that she explained that, um, to the, to the board, um, when we were working on that particular item. And I just didn't know. I'm looking to Ms. Rimble to see if she wanted to add.
To, I was looking for that exact item. And we'll go back and review it.
That's what I was going to say.
Um, the chair to board member Joyce, we'll go back and review it. I do know that there was a specific reason why there were some like services grouped together. And it is, if you don't want one, because they're so interconnected, we're just saying.
Appointment.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at the form now, um, emergency contact information, authorization for release of students from school and consent to receive healthcare services. And the services that are listed are care and treatment for illness, injury, and medical care, um, nutrition assessment, hearing screening, goli, um, coloysis screening, health counseling and consultation. So it's all grouped together and there's only one place. Not like you can check. I want my student to receive, you know, all the purposes except hearing screening. So you can't, it doesn't look to me like you could individually opt out of any of these. I just don't want, I mean, I want it to reflect the law, but I also want a parent that if they don't want help counseling or consultation, but they still can receive treatment for injury or emergency care. And I'm not sure that I'm reading it the way the law suggests that it should be. So I would appreciate it if we can go back and review that and make sure that our consent form matches, um, what the state statute says.
Thank you, board member Joyce. Dr. Green has indicated that they'll go back and they'll double check. And we'll also have the office of general counsel take a look at it, um, and make sure that we are absolutely compliant with state law. And they'll get back to us. I think at this point though, we, for the purposes of time, they don't need to research right now. We'll get, we'll have to come follow up because they want to make sure they double check everything. Okay?
That sounds great. Um, and the last thing that I wanted to, um, kind of put out, um, and address is we recently had, um, the meeting yesterday, I think it was yesterday, for the review of, um, of materials for the healthcare supplement and a team that was going to review what has been challenged. And I, I received some input from the community. I would just, I would just have one suggestion moving forward. Um, I think that it was, um, not clear to the community, to some of my constituents, how you would, you know, how did you, uh, how, how was this solicited and how did, uh, parents notice how to sign up? I followed up with the district and there was a link on the webpage and I think News forgot ran a story on it. Moving forward, I would just like to ask that any time that the district is, um, looking for stakeholder input, no matter what that is, that as a board, we represent our constituents, we represent pockets of the community. And if we can know that the, um, you know, something could be sent to the board, that we are soliciting for stakeholder input, that way we can, you know, reach out to the community, some of our community members and make sure they're aware that if they want to sign up for, be a part of that stakeholder input, that, um, that, you know, we, we, we lay that information to our constituents.
Okay. That, Dr. Green's acknowledging that, that that can be done. So, um, and thank you for that. All right. So for the, um, is that, is that everything?
That's all for me.
Perfect. All right. Um, at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion, um, uh, we're, uh, for the adjournment of the board of this meeting. Seven seconds. I have a motion by vice chair Pearson and a second by board member Car- Carney. All those in favor, signal by saying yay.
Yay.
Okay. Any opposed?
Is it?
She didn't say adjourn yet.
I didn't adjourn yet. We're.
Can I be in governance this? Normally, I would never ask to be in governance.
Can, I'm going to look at.
Is it legal?
I'm going to look at legal. Okay.
Is it legal for me to ask?
We're going to retake, I did not adjourn the meeting. We will retake the vote again. Dr. Green, I got a signal, I got a signal from OGC. I'm okay.
Okay. Well, I, because so many people are here, I just need to, um, share. When you saw me get up, we had a situation, uh, happen. It actually is a situation that happened over a month ago at Westside High School, which board member Jones would know about it. But that situation, there, there was a student, I can't even get into, because it happened over a month ago. So I really don't know all the details, but it was a fight. Video of the fight is possibly. Yeah, we're finding out more, but when our law enforcement engaged, the students ran and our law enforcement engaged then with JSO, chase, found the student. Well, when they found the student, the student was in a house. This house had, uh, had something in it. That's the way I'm going to leave it at the moment. They went and got a warrant. And then they went back to the house and the house had full, full of guns. Well, we just, oh, we were like, what the heck? What do you mean there's a press con? We don't know anything about. They included us in their press conference about finding this house of guns. However, law enforcement said they were on our campus and that is not true. The guns were in this house down the street. It is, but you know, the titles need to sound, you know, exciting. So somebody would pay attention, but that is not, so I had to hobble out and go deal with that. So I just felt like, everybody's here. Let me get this out.
A misprint by the press online.
Well, the, the, um, press conference is live, so you can hear the sheriff. And the sheriff and I, that's who I was on the phone with, like, can, can you walk me through what, what was said? Because we, we're in a workshop and I, so.
Any questions for Dr. Green on this item?
So we don't have full, all I know is I remember on February fifteenth, I notified board member Jones of some, something happening on Westside campus and student, like, you know, students are running and, but the rest of it. and student, ex- you know, students are running, and, but the rest of it would not be school district because it happened in a house down the road, um, that sheriff said, no, you wouldn't know about that stuff. But it, the way it reads, it reads like we, we were there from the very beginning and to the very end, and that's not true.
All right, on that note, thank you for clarifying, though, we appreciate that, um, and hopefully the media will make a clarification. It's been.
Oh, okay, I didn't get, cause I've been there with. Yeah, I was.
And this is why we're grateful that Dr. Green has good relations with local media, that's right. Thank you for having good relations with local media. All right, at this point, we're gonna, because I didn't adjourn, we're gonna redo our motion. Um, okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Pearson, I'm gonna go with a second by Board Member Carney, although I heard multiples. Um, all those in favor, signal by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? By unanimous, um, by unanimous vote, that meeting is adjourned, and we're gonna move into our next meeting. Um, oh, that's right, let me give you a second. Board Member Joyce, just hang tight, right there.
Exactly.
Thank you. Yeah, somebody texted us every two minutes. Sorry, CNN.
If you listen to, it's clear, it didn't happen on purpose, but you send a title with pictures of guns. Hey, we covered them since Westside.
All right, we are going to go ahead and, um, call the meeting to order. Uh, our special board meeting, the school board of Dubal County School District is now convened in a special board meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. The Dubal County School Board is here to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement and address other business items that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the board meeting, please note that pursuant to board policy, we accepted speaker cards for this meeting until the published star time for the meeting. In an effort to mitigate, mitigate against the spread of COVID nineteen, we have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes on the podium. Uh, we asked that each speaker wipe down the podium before you address the board. Um, according to the CDC's website, Dubal County's COVID nineteen community level is currently designated as low. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing for people with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID nineteen. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Dubal County School District. At this time, um, we wanna make sure that we note, um, that there has been approval pursuant to board policy two point two six. Board members may attend board meetings and participate in a vote, uh, through the use of interactive video and/or telephone system. Such participation is available and allowable under board policy two point two six, as Board Member Joyce has good cause for her absence due to illness of herself and family. The board has previously approved Board Member Joyce's participation in this, in this special board meeting earlier today. We approved her at that time for all meetings today. So we will move on, uh, to the approval of the twenty, uh, March twenty first, twenty twenty three agenda. That the Dubal County School Board approved the March twenty first, twenty twenty three agenda as submitted on March tenth, twenty twenty three, with the following changes. Items to be discussed: approval of alignment and adoption of instructional material report, item amended, board member travel, item added, and superintendent's travel, item added. I ask for a motion. I have a motion by Board Member Jones and a second by Board Member Willie. Um, are there any further comments? Seeing none, I call for your vote, if you could signal by saying aye. Board Member Joyce?
Aye.
All right, that move, by your action, you have approved that agenda, item, the agenda, um, by a vote of, uh, six zero. Um, we have, we were now on public comments, I'm gonna double check, do we have any public comments? No public comments, so I'm gonna move on, uh, to, uh, the, uh, discussion agenda. Um, at this time, we are looking at approval of the alignment and adoption of instructional materials report. Um, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Green to read the recommendation.
That the Dubal County School Board approved the alignment and adoption of instructional materials report.
I'll ask for a motion. Okay. I'm good? Yeah, it's not in here, I'm sorry, okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
No approval.
I have a motion by Board Member Jones and a second by Board Member Willie, is there, um, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Board Member Joyce? Board Member Joyce?
Aye.
All right, um, with that, the, that item passes six zero. I'm gonna move on to board member travel. That the Dubal County School Board confirmed the travel listed is for official board business, and that it complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. Um, April first through the second, twenty twenty three, Tampa, Florida, COSPA inaugural national conference, Willie, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Second.
I have a, a motion by Vice Chair Pearson and a second by Board Member Jones. Um, are there any comments? Seeing none, I'll call for your vote, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Board Member Joyce?
Aye.
That motion cap, by that action, you have approved that item six zero. It's been fixed, okay, thank you. We're moving today. Um, we're gonna move on to superintendent's travel, that the Dubal County School Board approved the following superintendent's travel, April fifth, twenty twenty three, Orlando, Florida, Go Lead Women's Conference, Leadership Conference, Transformational Leadership, Navigating with Excellence, at which our superintendent has been asked to be a keynote speaker. I ask for a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Willie and a second by Board Member Jones, are there any comments? Congratulations, they've got it, there we go, we'll take that one. Um, seeing nine, seeing one, I now call for your vote, uh, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Board Member Joyce?
Aye.
All right, well, by that action, you have approved the item six zero. That the Dubal County School Board moved to adjourn this meeting, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Carney, and I will go with Carney, and a, a second by, um, Board Member Jones. I was gonna say, that was a, definitely the same time, all those in favor, signal by saying yea. Board Member Joyce?
Aye, yay.
And by unanimous vote, um, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, and for those tuned in, thank you for being patient with us, we've got a lot of work done today.